Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Moorestown Council's special work session. It's May the 2nd, time is 6:31. I'm going to turn it over to Matt to go over the Mooresville Aquatic and Fitness Center project.
Did you have a few things you want to comment?
I'm sorry, I do, I have one other announcement before we get into it. We will be holding a closed session at the end of these two topics later this evening, and we'll have our Mayor Pertem take us into that. Frank, is there anything else I need to do, or is getting that added to the agenda?
Probably a motion to add that to the agenda would be appropriate, yeah. For consultation with the downtown attorney.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to add a closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege information at the end of this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion, a second, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries seven zero. With that, I'll turn it back over to Matt. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone. We are here to discuss, kind of as a follow-up to our meeting this past November on the Aquatics and Fitness Center, following the last, I think it was a work session that council had giving us a scope and telling us to move, to go forth and bring back some concepts, that's where we are now. I wanted to introduce the team from Ratio. This is Hal Bowen. He is the main man for our project, and he's going to introduce the rest of his team and kind of lead council through this discussion and kind of give you guys some, hopefully some points of great discussion for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for inviting us here today. Actually, I have my phone on because I have our aquatic consultant, Jeff Nordor, Councilman Hunsaker. I'm putting him on speakerphone, since we don't have Wi-Fi, we can't Skype this today. So Jeff, are you able to hear us okay?
Yes, I'm on here.
Okay, I'm putting you on the table now, so don't go anywhere. And then also with me is Brent Covington, architect with Ratio. And where'd Bill go?
Right here.
Oh, there he is. Yeah, Bill Hamilton is our landscape architect with CLH Design. We also have structural engineer Stroud Pence, not with us here today, and our PMNE engineer, engineer design, they're also not with us today. So basically, the purpose is to be easy.
It'll work alright.
So. Do we need to go to?
I think it's a scroll down.
Oh. Let's see this. Nope, scroll down, okay, alright. So, we've done the introductions, we'll skip past that. Basically, what we're doing, we're just kind of giving you an update now of where we're at in the process here for designing the new aquatic facility. And basically, the intent of this first phase is to reconcile scope and budget. We're trying to identify the six items that you see listed up there, which are also on the floor here, are the desired scope of work that staff has focused about. And they include a new indoor aquatic facility to replace the existing one that we currently have. The second item are new locker rooms, which should access the new indoor aquatic facility. Extending the existing parking lot, the staff has identified a set of target of about four new parking spaces, but of course, we'll research your UDO and the code requirement to react and dictate that group car more space, and that we don't know that yet. There is a weight room on the second floor currently, so when we build those new locker rooms, you'll no longer need the locker rooms that are currently in the aquatic, or in the rec facility. So the intent is, or what staff would like, from this new weight room down to that first floor, and then expand the group fitness room that's on the second floor into that thing. So that's the fifth item. And then the final item is replacing the existing tennis courts, which seem to have some sort of subgrade settlement issue that's created some rather wide fissures in the court that Brent fell through with the time we walked out there. But we got it, Jeff.
The scope that we provided to Ratio was based on the November discussion with council, and we kind of framed it down, and those are the ones that we moved ahead on, so that's where these, just want to remind everybody that's where we're going to come up with.
Yeah, and one of the things that I'd like to do maybe at the end of this, or come back to potentially, is to just kind of confirm, I want to first go through the presentation, but confirm kind of maybe what the order of priority is for those six items, because I think we have a sense that the $5.7 million budget may not give us all six of those. And so how we, what we're trying to do with this particular phase is to identify some design options that can give you choice, allow you to make informed decisions on how best to spend that money. And so how we prioritize those six options will kind of begin to shape how we set up the options. So let's talk a little bit about where we are in the project schedule. So currently, we're in what we call the pre-design phase, which again is reconciling scope and budget. We started in mid-April, we're looking to provide a deliverable toward the end of June, and that will include the options, some conceptual designs, some cost associated with those options. And the thought process will get, will create as many variables as we can, so that you can really choose how best to spend your money for this phase. And then, once you make that decision, we'll move into schematic design, and then we're estimating approximately four to five weeks for that phase, probably another four to six weeks for design development. And at the end of the design development, that's when we'll be able to submit for site plan approval. So while construction documents, it'll only probably going to take six days, weeks, depending on the end of the project, the real critical path is going to be the site plan approval, which is typically about eight to nine months and more still on the minimum. And all that, again, is based on scope. So what that means is that we'll have to make a decision, we, preference would probably to not bid the project until we complete site plan approval, so that our construction documents, and then that's the more traditional way, so our construction documents can incorporate all those comments, and it can be ready to go. I have seen some projects where we overlap bidding and that process, I don't recommend it though, and I think this would not be a project that that would be appropriate for, given kind of the nature of the scope. And then, we're estimating 12 to 18 months for construction, but there's really nothing in the project that would take more than 12 months to construct, but because the facility's going to be occupied, there's going to be some phasing and logistics that has to go on. So that will probably make it take more like 18 months by the time you phase it or order it, meaning an occupied site. So I want to talk just a little bit about some of the conversations we've had with staff about options for aquatic facilities. And Jeff, if you're, are you able to hear us okay, Jeff? Have I lost you?
No.
Great, okay, so in some of the conversations we've had, obviously, fitness lap lanes have been a high priority, ads have leisure pool options, multipurpose type leisure pools, that's fairly common that we see that. There doesn't seem to be a huge demand. Kind of crazy stuff. We're obviously wanting to fit the scope of this aquatic facility to your budget, because without question, the aquatic facility is going to be the largest component of the budget. In fact, it likely will be two-thirds or more of your budget, potentially, it could use up to the entire budget, depending on the decisions we made. I think we'll try to structure it to where it doesn't, because I don't think that's the direction you want to go, but it is going to be the largest component, so the decisions we make there will have the biggest impact on the total project. So some options we talked about, some reasonable toss options are things like climbing walls, manufactured climbing walls that can be mannerable. The good thing about options like these, and also aquatic play structures that you see, oh actually, this is a bit, I don't have that, are that you can fit it as often, so if you can afford it on bid day, you can get it, if not, you know, you can come back later when funds are available and add those kind of things. We've talked about zero depth entry, which kind of, you know, where you have the entrance into the leisure pool starts, it starts flushing, and then gradually slows down to the three foot, six inch depth of the leisure pool, fitness pool. As I mentioned earlier, we've talked about aquatic play structures, and they come in all shapes and sizes, and if you could eat up a chunk of your butt, and it's larger ones, the three we're showing here are examples of fairly simple, smaller structures, again, they make great bid alternates, and if you can't afford it in the initial phase, it's something you can plan for always at a future, at a future date when funding is developed. You know, there are some other reasonably inexpensive ways to make the best use of playful, you know, playful devices that can be tethered up in the middle of the waters for safety, but that provide a lot of aquatic fun without the expense of these fixed play structures. So we're looking at those kinds of options, and some of those things will be some of the variables that we include in the price options, so that, again, you can kind of pick and choose to suit your budget. And there's a few branding opportunities for the aquatic facility, if you want the town of Moore still steel on there, or some other lettering, that's something that we can certainly consider. And so now, we're, we had, currently where we're at the project, we're doing our onsite full investigations, our engineers, in fact, went out today to look at the existing structure. We're researching the building codes, because we know, and touching the rec center, we're going to run into some issues with, we know that there are a number of accessibility and other code compliance issues with that building, so how we touch that building is going to have a big impact on budget issues. We're going to want to minimize what we do in the rec center, or keep those costs down. We're also, we're doing programming at the same time, we met the staff a couple of weeks ago, so we're talking about, you know, layouts for, here you see a couple of options that show ways that you can either combine lap lanes with play pools, or, you know, you can possibly do them separately, lap pool with some leisure area and a separate multipurpose play pool, a lot of different options on how to do that. But in meeting with staff, this particular sketch is one that council and producer will see that kind of capture what they were most interested in. And Jeff, you might, you might want to make a few comments on it, now we're on the slide of the category, you did a two-pool layout, you might want to talk about the split lane versus eight lanes, just kind of some of the options with this layout.
Yeah. So, looking at that pool layout, obviously, it's a lot of problems, it's intricate, so it's not any sense of, I believe, we'll be sensitive to budget, but that was some of the conversation we had upfront already, and trying to meet as many needs across the community as we could. So, you know, one of the first things you notice is that we actually have two pools. Two pools allows you to have two different water temperatures, and we think that's an advantage for the community, because the pool towards the top of the stage, you know, that's the zero-depth entry pool, that's got the play structure in it, and it's tied to the teaching pool, which is also, you know, can be used for warm water therapy and that type of thing, so the people that are younger, young kids, older folks, it would enjoy that being just a couple degrees warmer than their traditional lap pool would be, so I think that's a big advantage in the splitting into two versus one. And like we said, you know, that, it's that area that's recreation, it's got basketball, it's got volleyball, et cetera, you know, social bench, underwater bench, that can be used a lot of ways for programming in the community use itself. So, you know, we allocated a square footage there that can grow, can shrink, depending on what the thought is there. The other pool is the six-lane lap pool, and that we're trying to be, you know, recognize the need for lap lanes, there's always a, you know, need for that, and, you know, set that up so it could be used, you know, with starting blocks, or showing starting blocks on a deep end, and because we have starting blocks, we have deep water there, and that's why we can co-use something like a climbing wall on that end of the pool, because we already have the water depth available to us to make that happen. And then, you know, obviously, we've got the shallow end of the pool, so we've got the underwater bench, stair access, those things, they make it a little more social, a little more open, and, you know, there's some things we could do there, we could put water basketball on the shallow end, or, you know, floatable elements, or something like that, too, if we wanted to put more recreation activity in here. But, you know, a lot of open swim, a lot of programming for lessons, swim lessons in here, open the community for lap swimming and that, and potentially, if there's ever a, you know, summer-based rec league or that, they could use your school, too.
If y'all have questions, we can put Jeff back up to the speaker in a little bit, so that's probably good. So that's kind of, we're beginning to look at, we're also...
Yeah, that was initial discussion, and kind of what we did is, here's a lot of what we can do in two pools, and a fairly tight footprint, meeting a lot of needs, and, you know, recognizing that we're under pretty severe budget limitation.
Okay, we're going to move on now, Jeff, thanks. Alright, so we're also looking at building enclosure options, that's obviously going to have a big impact on cost. You know, so the first choice is obviously bricks and mortar, permanent building enclosures, which is, this is a YMCA that we did, the Stevens Stanley YMCA, it's actually the Con Aquatic Center of the Stevens Stanley YMCA in Champaign, Illinois. This is another YMCA we did up in North Raleigh, the Carpen Y, so you see a couple of bricks and mortar option, this is a glue-in, new structure. Another enclosure system we're looking at, that would be a little less expensive, is a system, a prefabricated system by a company like Open Air, where you can get, you can get a lot of glazing options, you can do hollow carbon or glass, how does it cost? It's going to be greater with glass, but you can get, you know, plenty of glazing with this kind of option as well, at a lower cost, and it's bricks and mortar. Well, if you have those options, though, the more you get into those operable things, the more costs can go up. So those are the kinds of variables we want to look at, and another option that you all know that that would be lower cost, would be more like a sprung structure, which has less glazing. And I think, I think in our climate, the connection now for is the glazing abuse is something we want to try to emphasize. One of the things that we're going to have to look at through this process is how any of these types of structures are treated in your UDO, so they, as we work with your planning department, they may or may not meet the set of qualifications for UDO. I suspect one like the Open Air would, this one, I don't know, it's kind of a, it's a gray area, not exactly addressed, but we'll just have to have conversations with the planners about. So the real, the main goal of all this, I said earlier, is reconciling scope and budget, and trying to get you ideally out of this phase, we'll come out with about three options, three design options in general that have, I would hope that we can, one that has all six of these items. We may not, we may find as we move into it, that if our building costs, that none of the options can add all six, if you're starting with the aquatic facility as a high priority. You know, but at least nice, at least one did, even if it means a lower level of quality upon the aquatic facility, and then others that adjust variables, maybe take some things out, or get a higher quality aquatic facility. And then, within each option, I think we can have various for the type of enclosure we do, for the cost. So again, we want to give you as many choices as we can. Some of the issues impacting project, obviously, we talk about budget, budget issues, $5.7 million dollars, as we develop the cost model, we'll take out soft costs, design fees, FPD, owner destruction contingency, testing costs, survey costs, that kind of thing, and we'll probably get down to a budget that's in the vicinity, a five million, give or take a couple hundred thousand, that'll be the actual construction cost that we have to work with, so that's what we're going to be pushing these options for, but all that'll be identified and reported. Some other options that we're up against, developmental land restrictions, the size of the site is somewhat limited, and we don't, and obviously, on one side of the site, you've got the buffers that are having, basically, are making, or we're not going to be able to expand to that side, which I believe that's the east side, is that, sorry, west, yeah, which will come to a little graphic here in a second. The connection to the existing building, there's a graphic that we'll show you in a minute. When you have an older building that has some, that's old, it was built under, I guess, the 1978 Building Code with eighty-four, this building was built in eighty-seven, but it's under the seventy-eight code with eighty-four edition, there are a lot of things that no longer are in the aquatic code, so we can't just add an aquatic facility to this, we're going to have to put a firewall between the new aquatic facility and this facility. How we do that is going to have a big impact on the cost of this facility, so that's one of the things we'll look at. Solar orientation of both tennis courts and the aquatic addition is going to be a factor influencing design. The firm maintenance issues, the feasibility report you had done a couple of years ago, talked about the need to replace the existing roofing system, so one of the things we need to know is, are you looking to capture, that's on the rec thing, are you looking to capture that kind of cost in this budget? That is a pretty big cost, and again, it's touching that existing building in a more significant way, the more we touch it, the more we're going to potentially trigger other costs, other operations we have to make, so those are things we have to consider. As I said earlier, the UDO requirements in terms of the stereo materials, aesthetics, parking requirements, particularly for the aquatic facility, the surrounding factors. We've talked about existing building code compliance, site impervious limits, you know, Bill is going to have to do calculations on your current impervious, and, you know, that may, that's going to impact the amount of impervious surface that we could add, we may have to look at options like impervious paving, or other options to potentially comply with orders on that. Obviously, the fact that we're going to have to do some phasing with this map right side is going to be a factor influencing design and the cost of construction. As you phase it, you draw out the construction duration, so you have more general conditions, the cost of construction goes up, so that's going to have to be considered. And then, another impact could be possible road improvements required to Mooresville Parkway, so we'll likely need to get a TIA to see what impact this additional facility has on traffic inside here, maybe some driveway and other improvements required there. And that is just your existing site, I don't think we, I don't think we need to spend any time on that, just quickly wanted to illustrate a couple of the concepts I was talking about earlier. The issue of firewall, kind of what we're trying to show with this sketch, there's a couple of ways that we're going to be able to address that. One is that you can put a firewall, you know, at the existing building, and then your lockers in your aquatic facility, wherever they go, are outside of that firewall. The other is that you can potentially build the lockers, but that's a square footage of the lockers, and the existing may be within compliance, or within the limitation of the existing building, and then put your firewall between lockers and new, and that just gives us more control over the firewall, so we'll have to evaluate both of those. But the thing that's important to see here is that the way that we connect to that existing building is going to have a huge impact on cost. We're not going to want to connect to the long side, more than likely, because we end up having to do a lot of improvements to the existing wall in order to, a lot of costly improvements in order to meet those fire requirements, so we're, that's why we're kind of showing the possibility of a connection on the end.
Can you show us on that picture where the front door is?
So, in this particular case, it, well, it can, really, it can work either way, so it could either be there, or it could be there.
Where is it today?
This, this one, I believe it's on that side. Was it on that side? Have I got it backwards? Oh, yeah, that's on the stairs.
It's on your right.
But it could be either, the point of the graphic is just connecting to the narrow end is what we want to do. And you'll see on the next sketch, maybe the next one will show you a little bit clearer what I'm talking about. So a couple of, kind of just sort of party diorams of what we mean with that, is that when we initially met the staff, kind of what they were thinking was that you would probably build a new pool where the existing outdoor pools are, your tennis courts might stay where they are, you can span parking, you move the drives to right, but the reality is, that's going to be difficult to do because of that long-faced firewall connection. So what we're more than likely looking at is a scenario where we shift the aquatic facility off to the side to be able to connect to the end. Now, we can't connect to that end because of the buffers we've got on that side, so we've got to put it somewhere on this side, so it could be a cat corner kind of connection, or it could be on the side in front, or on the side in back, and those are the kind of things we've got to investigate in order to minimize the connection to that existing building. Just, can we ask questions?
Sure.
So, this firewall, just, is it, if we just finished, I have more for Courtney, we just did a HSNC, right? That they have a firewall in there?
Is that a building good thing? So can I...
So the reason is, like I'm asking, because we have fire hydrants, if you have a fire hydrant, do we need a firewall?
There's no relationship between the two.
So, because these are building extensions, I'm trying to correlate two building, like all existing building, and then we built an existing building next to it, and if the firewall is just...
Let's not get too much in the weeds.
Yeah, yeah.
It is what it is, we need firewalls.
There's no relation to the hydrants, it's a totally separate issue.
Keep it on mine, let's keep on moving. I think he's at that end, so.
Yeah, so we're basically at the questions and answers.
My question goes to the state, right?
No, you're not. You're asking about something that's, I mean, we're getting in the weeds on firewalls. We need them?
Nope.
Can we use the mics, please?
Yep.
It's hard to hear down here.
I will say this, general limits hurt from a planner, firewall stops spreading fire, fire hydrants with the fire out. Except that's the easy way out.
Simply, it is a building code requirement, it's not an option if there's not.
It's not an if, it's a when and a where.
There's not going to, the only option would be if you completely renovated the existing building to sprinkle it and make it more compliant to where it could have a larger allowable area.
So it's not sprinkled to the current code, is that what I'm hearing?
It's not sprinkled, and it's not fire-protected, so its allowable area is very limited, which means you can't just add on to it, you've got to put a firewall and create a new, and if we go renovate an existing to make it that way, what would be...
It's sprinkled.
Okay.
Well, my first comment is that I think it's encouraging to see this kind of a concept, and I think that since we passed these bonds in 2012, I would just want to see if there's any options of, once we do approve a plan, that we can accelerate the construction schedule to the extent, you know, we can make it sooner than eighteen months, because I'm looking at this saying, it could be another two years, assuming whenever we approve it, that, you know, or is it just going to be eighteen months?
Potentially, yes, because I think, as I was saying earlier, I think what we're going to find is we probably can't hit all six of these in the budget we've got, and the ones that impact phasing the most are the work we're doing in the existing building, the weight room and the existing locker rooms. So if we're not going into that existing building, we can build the new aquatic facility, potentially the parking and tennis in 12 months. It'll, it'll be a lot of site logistic kind of phasing, but the real time phasing has to do with how you operate, how you work around the existing facility.
Yeah, because people are already using it and stuff like that, so, I mean, okay, well, I mean, that's just something I wanted to bring out, but I think, I just want the citizens listening to know that, you know, once we have a plan, I really want to do what we can to move forward. Just a couple of points I'll make just on the facility. The first is regarding the pool, would access to the pool be from the locker rooms, like traditional pools, men's and...
Yeah, the intent, and we kind of, we kind of see the, the reasons we kind of put out as one and two is the new pool and new locker rooms, is ideally, you always want to access an indoor pool facility directly from the locker rooms, it's, it's just, it doesn't work well otherwise, so we kind of see those as being kind of one and one A, you really want to do both of them, and so, yes, that would be the intent, and that's why we're showing in that addition that it would be a new locker room in.
And I've seen some pools, I love the idea of separating the pools, you know, like what, what gentleman from Councilman Hunsaker said, but is there any way of getting two or three additional lanes, you know, because I've seen some pools have a lap lanes, like six lap lanes, and then another few the same length of lap lane, and then the leisure, I don't know if that's an option, you know, just to build enough space so that you give more swimming lanes for citizens?
I think some of these sketches showed that, I don't know, Jeff, you might want, did you hear that question, Jeff?
Could you repeat it, please?
The question is, could we build additional lap lanes, you know, in the leisure pool area, so that, you know, we could have three or four more lanes that would give us ten lanes in the Mooresville pool, which I think we could, you know, accommodate more swimmers during peak hours, plus for lessons. And I think...
Hal, could you repeat that, because I hear something about additional lap lanes in the leisure, but I can't hear the rest of it.
I'll tell you what, Jeff, I'll go ahead and take that question. The question was, can we add additional lanes to the leisure pool so that they could have as many as, you know, eight or ten lanes, kind of like some of the sketches you've shown, and the answer is, yeah, we definitely can do that, it's just all a matter of cost. And so, as the pools get larger, not only do the pools get more expensive, but the enclosure gets larger, and so, that's where, again, I think we're at a starting point, our aquatic facility is probably two-thirds of our budget, decisions like that may push it to three-quarters or even to the entire budget, so it may, and that's why we want to create options for you, because you may decide as a council that, okay, we want it, we want that better pool and locker facility, and we're going to put most of the budget of that, and I guess the parking that's triggered from that, but that could mean losing tennis courts, it could mean losing the improvements in the existing rec center, you know, and it could also mean that the type of enclosure you do is a less expensive type enclosure, instead of bricks and mortar, maybe it's one of the other type structures.
I just wanted to, just final two points, I don't want to take away time from my other colleagues, but with the tennis courts, it looks like you're going to resurface those courts completely, is there any way of getting wheelchair accessibility for those courts? Because I know the USTA has grants that we can maybe get to build courts, and one of the requirements is wheelchair accessibility.
Absolutely, it's definitely required, but still, correct me if I'm wrong, but resurfacing it an option is...
Not resurfacing, I mean redo, that's what I meant, completely redo.
They could be located somewhere besides where they are, as we work through these concepts, what's going to be the best place to have those courts at. So, yes, making them accessible would be a target.
The final thing is energy efficiency, and I mean, I think that, you know, you made a good point, that this is built to very old code, but I think we're, you know, looking at, you know, using technology and analyzing data in terms of the existing energy usage of our building, so I would be very interested in terms of, given... usage of a building, so I would be very interested in terms of, given even how old the building is, whatever we can do, and I'm assuming you're going to do that, to make sure that we're maximizing the energy use in this building as our first major redevelopment or renovation of an existing facility.
And by that, I assume you mean the new addition, the new...
The new addition, I mean, just in terms, I've heard in the past that the building hasn't been as energy efficient, but it's built, you know, much older, but I'm just, you know, I know you're probably going to do that, but I just wanted to throw that out there as, you know, some best practices we can look at.
Definitely would consider that, and, and what that'll come down to is, is, obviously, we all remember the eighties when all the buildings had their windows, so, so the, one of the biggest energies, or enemies of energy is glass, and yet, glass is also what makes a space really enjoyable to be in, particularly a space like a pool, so that's going to be kind of a value decision of weighing, you know, a, a structure like the last sprung one, which has very little glass and is very well insulated, is a pretty energy-efficient structure, but it doesn't have that connection to the outdoors and that natural light that you tend to want at a pool in an environment like North Carolina, so, so we're, we're going to, so it may be that a, a bricks and mortar option gives you kind of the, the best, the balance of the two, where we can put glass where it makes sense on the proper exposure, so you can shade it and you can get, you can get, not get too much heat gain, but yet, we can have well-insulated walls and a well-insulated roof where we don't need the glass, so that, that's kind of the trade-off, but that'll come at a higher price than, you know, one of the prefabricated structures.
Yeah, I find it interesting for the courts, a different place, I mean, maybe there's, you know, that, that'll be interesting, is to see where they're, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think it'll, more than likely, to make this work, in, in particular, because of the fact that it's going to be very difficult to put the aquatic facility behind the existing because of the firewall connection, it's going to take some rearranging of the site to make things work, and so probably the tennis court relocating would be one of those possibilities.
Thank you.
Liz or Vicki?
I want to introduce maybe something to get, instead of just having a random amount of, you know, wants, I want to maybe try a little direction here. First of all, are you proposing two types of pools, the lap pool and a more leisure pool that would be for maybe younger or a different kind of activity group?
Yes, ma'am, that's what we had talked about once before, was looking at either divide, doing one pool that has separate use areas, like the design here, we're separating the two, in our conversations with Jeff and with some others, the thought in having two separate pools like this is if there is some reason you have to close one of the pools, if they're joined, you've got to close everything, in this case, we'd be able to reduce and not lose the entire opportunity to use it.
Right, so, I did a little math, looking at your estimated project schedule with the pre-design and the design and construction phase, with the limitation of having the building renovation concurrent to the existing, you know, we're not doing shutdown, we're doing construction during an open aquatic center, it's about August of 2020, if we did everything, 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 and I, I'm close, I, I was a little generous sometimes.
Haven't projected it out yet, but it's, um...
But, that's what I'm...
During design, your control is going to be the site plan approval process, and then you're looking at least twelve months of construction.
I did eighteen months for construction.
Mark of, of what it's going to be.
So with that in mind, I know that I would like to see an, an improvement to our pools and, and more activities, so I'm going to ask the council to consider this, if we focus on building the pool, the new pool, and we delay or phase the renovations to the aquatic center to a phase two, we could accelerate building the pool and we would include the locker rooms, so that could be a self-contained project, we could go that at one pace. When we involve the renovation of the aquatic center concurrently, that's where we're getting a lot of lag on our, our deliverable and, you know, it's mixing a lot of different things, so, it's a consideration, but that would allow us maybe to deliver before that 2020 date. Another consideration is, we have a bond that we took out quite a while ago, and people are wanting to see some progress in this approach, this phased approach, which, you know, we have to kind of talk about, would allow us to show progress, and then we would have a phase two planned. The tennis courts, unfortunately, I would call it phase three, because it's best to do the tennis courts last, because you don't want to touch the earth and, and level it and do all that fine tuning until you're not going to do any more construction, it's really important that you have a good surface for the tennis courts. So, I don't know what that means about the firewall and the placement and everything, but I really think that if we just do one project, finish it, do another project, finish it, might allow us to make progress and to accelerate the pool, so. And that's all I have for right now.
Okay, Liz?
Would you want to comment on that?
And I would say for this phase of the project, we want to, we want to look at the whole thing and kind of master plan it, and that will allow us to also do the impervious calculations and everything, because what we wouldn't want to do is just do the one part, and then you find out later when you decide to do the other part, oh, you exceeded your impervious...
I'm not saying don't design the rest.
Oh, right.
You, you are going to design the whole thing, it's the construction element that needs, you know, because your construction phase concurrent use would be eighteen months, but if you don't do concurrent use and you're actually building a new, new pool and so forth, you could condense that and, and make that schedule a little bit thinner.
Yeah, in general, I agree with you, I, I think as the options take shape, decisions about that will become more clear, and we'll be able to have more of a dialogue once we see what those options are, and I, in general, I agree that I, I think that when the budget is limited, you're better off doing the parts that you do correctly than cutting back on everything, and I think that's probably some of the decisions that we're going to get into.
Okay, Liz?
Okay, so I'll be the third one to say, I, I wish the timeline was a little better too, I'll leave it at that, the fact that it goes out so far, if we could work on that, I'd be happy with that. As far as the rest of this, I think you're, you all are on the right track, I like the idea of two separate pools, I'd really like to start weighing in on all the details, but I don't think this is probably the appropriate time to do it, but I appreciate all the pictures, because you've given us a lot of, a lot of things to, to think about, a lot of options to look at right now, but I don't think we're ready as a council to kind of do that, or should do that at this point, but I love the idea that you're going to come back with at least three, I think if you give us too many options, that's not good, so I like the three options, and I, I like the approach you're using, try to give us everything you can, let's see what that looks like, and then kind of phase down from there. So, so with all that being said, we need to give you a prioritized list tonight, is that, is that what you're looking for from us?
I wouldn't say it has to be tonight, but it, but if you are able tonight to, this order is basically what staff gave us, so we want to confirm, is that correct, or do we need to adjust something, because as we, and when I say you don't have to do it tonight, we've still got another week or so in our schedule of doing research before we get into conceptual design, by the time we get into conceptual design, we want to know the priority, because that's going to dictate how we set up the options.
Well, and, and that, that's going to clearly play into how long this timeline goes or doesn't, so I think the quicker we make the decisions, the better, and I'm ready to tell you what my priority is, and I think, for me, I think staff gave you the appropriate list, go in, go in, looking at that list, that is in the order that I would prefer to, to see things done. With the caveat, there is a great need in this community for addition, additional exercise rooms, so I think we have to, at a minimum, make sure we include that, and I know you have that on there, but I think, and, and this is not going to be a surprise to council or our staff, because I've said this before, I, I'm okay if the tennis courts fall out of this plan, because I think it's going to come down to money in the end, and I think we have some other tennis courts already that are not a major issue, that have been built correctly, that people are using, we have plans for additional tennis courts and another park, and a phase three of the Morseville Community Park, so for me personally, the tennis court should be at the end, the exercise rooms are more important, so, I hope that helps, and I hope, I hope we can get to a prioritized list that we all agree on tonight.
Let's go down, we'll hear from Michael, TJ, and then Satish. Any comments, questions?
Sure, I'll weigh in, thank you, it's a good briefing, I liked your line of thought. Scope, I agree with the staff's put out, I'm, I'm happy with one through three, four, five, and six, you can, if you need to, once you go, your due diligence, that, I'm flexible with that. I like what my colleague said about phasing, and that, that will come out more as you explained, I think, but I'd be happy to just go ahead and build the aquatic center, and then the other stuff can phase down, that's kind of in that order. Where are you going, when you come back at some point, will you have operating costs of the new facility? Can you give us an idea of what you think that would increase to, or?
Engineered operating costs for, for just the new, yeah.
Yeah, you know, how much the pool's going to cost, is both separate and stuff like that, just yearly, yeah, okay, and then we can compare it to what we're currently doing in, with the old one, and I, I don't think there are any benefits, but are there anything that, solar benefits that we could instill in the new building, that the state allows or anything like that, I don't, you know?
In terms of solar votaic, for power or?
Sure, a little, or whatever you can do, a part of being green or two?
Cost effectively.
Okay.
There are, we've, we've done solar hot water on some schools, because it only takes a couple panels to do that.
Can you get the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry, but sol, solar votaic without, typically ranges from a thirty to fifty year payback, without major tax credits, which, which we don't have available now, so it's just not cost, and when you're looking at a project that's already budget-challenged, that, it's just not an option.
Right, okay, and then my last question would be, I think you had a slide up there, you did a local pool in Raleigh, and could you put up that slide, so?
Of course, yeah, that would be, where was that? Right there, that's the...
So, yeah, that...
Car W M C A.
Yeah, so that, I'm, I'm, I kind of like, I'm one of the advocates of, or, I'd like to see more light in it, and I know you indicated that, you know, there's a trade-off with that, with the energy benefits, things like that.
And, and actually, this is what I was suggesting, I mean, a bricks and mortar, a more imperative structure, a more traditional construction, is the one that I think gives you the most flexibility to kind of meet both of those demands, because we can place the glazing, we can orient it, you know, correctly on the north and working south elevations, not on the east and west, we can shade it, we can limit it, to minimize the heat gain, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a more traditional construction, whereas with an open-air type structure, you're, you know, which is the... The, um, let's see, where'd that rascal go? Which is that type of thing, prefab, it's not going to be as well insulated, it's a lot of glass, so it's not going to be as energy efficient, it's got great light and it feels real good, but it's, it's not going to be real energy efficient, and then, you know, more of the sprung-type structure are very energy efficient, but very little glazing light, so I think, I mean, a, in terms of meeting your U D O, in terms of meeting your energy goals and design goals, definitely bricks and mortars are the best, but it's also going to be the most expensive, more than likely, of the three options.
And then, but back to the one you did in Raleigh, you could, you could add more light through the ceiling, I guess, but again, back to...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you have total control of how much you add, but, and I, it, it costs a lot to add more light through the ceiling, so, I mean, you can definitely do it, but it...
Or a hybrid of that and something else. Okay, thank you.
First round first, TJ?
Yes, please. So, I had some, I was wondering if council would be willing to possibly shut down the facility, would council be open to shutting down the facility completely to speed construction and save cost? That's been sort of touched on, but not really addressed.
There's no question that that would save money, because when you're working around an occupied facility, contractors are going to charge a lot more for that.
I do like the one through six options there, which is good, I like the two pools, I think that's good, I'd love to hear staff's opinion of our current lanes, or, and how much that's being used, and how much we need to improve, do we need six, or do we need eight, in order to meet our end population of the town? We want to just do this once, and we want to get to where we need to be, if you have that answer now.
We, as, through the, all the, the entire process, we certainly looked, and we are obviously very, very limited now, and we have talked, Jerry and I have gone through this probably as much as anything, of talking about the benefits of six and eight lanes, and the eight lanes giving us a little bit more flexibility with competition use and things like that. After our discussion a few weeks ago with Rishon, with, with Councilman Hansaker, what we did, what we were able to start talking about, and do you mind just going back to the layout? One of the benefits we looked at is the possibility of actually moving to a six-lane pool, and reason, like, like the one is, that is shown, like, because this still allows us to do some recreational swim competitions without having to look at the full-blown, you know, you know, limited, judged, you know, official competitions. The other thing that six lanes does, it allows us a smaller pool deck, and with eight lanes, now you're looking at extending the deck a little farther out to account for bleachers and things like that, but we think we could still get the spirit of the use here, still capture a lot of the, the lap swim. The other thing that you can see at the top, I'm going to borrow your mouse for a second, is this here, actually being able to use this recreational area for some of the, the younger children's swim lessons, so we'd be able to take them out of the lanes altogether and utilize that area for some of that as well, with a little bit of warm water, possibly some of the, the water rubbies classes and things like that, so, just in, in being able to have, and Jerry, you have anything to add to that? I mean, this was really, the six lanes, we think probably maximizes the cost and the bet, the cost and benefits most effectively for what we look, what we're looking at. The six lane still does give us some options with competition and plenty of, of lap use and family use and things like that, without having to look at all the additional concrete and the decking that adds to a bigger structure and things like that that eight lanes would trigger.
And it has to be even numbers, it can't go to seven?
Oh, I, as far as I know, it can go to, we just, we, we looked at the differences in six and eight lanes, and we just talked about those two things that way.
Did you hear that, Jeff, is there, I've never heard of a seven-lane pool, I assume it's because you don't, you don't gain any, or, or is that, does that happen, do you go in between six and eight occasionally?
Yeah, I've never run across one in my career, so it's, it's very rare, it's hot duck.
Because I, I assume jumping from six to eight opens up, it opens up advantages of competition that you don't get going from six to seven, so there's kind of no, no reason to make that added cost.
Yeah, I mean, the reason to have more lanes is because then you can, you can speed up the meat, actually, if you have a bunch of kids, you know, that's why a ten lane's better than an eight lane, eight lane's better than a six lane, because you have all these heats you're running, you got extra kids per heat, you really, you know, if you've ever been to swim meet, it stretches out for hours, if you can start shortening that up, that's an advantage.
Thanks. And our, our thought with the six lanes is it allows for some of like the summer pools that some of the HOAs might have, and being able to start one of our own, again, not a full competition-sized swim program, but at the same time, would be able to host some meats that way, that six lanes would allow us to be able to do.
Okay, and it sounds like the footprint is constraining us, if we were to sort of take tennis courts out of the equation on this site completely, would that give us a bigger footprint that we could?
Actually, I think budget is constraining more, now, the tennis courts, if we took them out, it does give us a lot more flexibility arranging things on the site, which will help a lot with the impervious issue, it'll help with the layout of parking, and it'll give us more flexibility with where we place the aquatic facility, but what's really driving that more than anything is the, is the, your, again, your biggest cost is that indoor aquatic facility, so the bigger it gets, the, the budget jumps dramatically.
The other thing that we had talked a lot about is that the pool at the top of this, of this diagram, the, the recreational areas, one of the things that Jerry and I have both heard consistently from other aquatic operators in the area and around the state, that if they could go back and do it again, they would invest more in the play pools than the lap pools, because of the family use and the type of recreational activity it would get. So, in this case, we definitely want to rec, you know, recognize the need for more lap lanes, but by looking at a little more enhanced recre, you know, the recreational play side of it, we're still able to capture a lot of those uses that would have been in the lanes, in the lap part of the pool, and still be able to really deliver on that and create, again, kind of look, learning from our, our peers around the state and around the region, saying that really, the, you know, the real bang for your buck is with the recreational swim areas, the play areas, the places where families can come in and use it and things like that.
Yeah, that all sounds really good, especially because, getting back to the tennis courts, since we pretty much have to redo them, we're not required to keep them on this site, and as Liz mentioned, we do have another sort of area that we're thinking about already putting them, so I don't, I think that the constraint that it puts on this site...
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that, I mean, I think that, you know, I do agree with Liz that we do need more exercise rooms, but I think that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with the courts in the phase two of Morseville Park, and I do think, we have a good junior tennis program there already, so eliminating three tennis courts is just going to take away opportunities for our citizens that are really enjoying a good sport, I don't see the benefit of cutting three tennis courts, I mean, I mean, I, I see the benefit of maybe delaying it, I, I'm, I'm willing to listen to Liz Johnson in terms of, she raises a good point of, you know, delaying the courts, or maybe Vicki made that point, delaying the courts and getting one part done, but to eliminate the courts completely, I, I just don't, I just, I don't know, I just don't see the benefit.
How about as a compromise, if we, if we had at least one option that keeps the courts on site, and at least one that relocates, I mean, we see kind of what relative benefits come from, both, both cost and in terms of layout.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we had more of a plan on the courts of M A F C, of, of more... Yeah, I mean, I think if we had more of a plan on the courts of MAFC, of Mooresville Community Park Phase Two, we knew we were going to get five, then I would probably be like, yeah, maybe we just would bag the three. But I'm just worried about it from the people that use that facility right now for junior tennis lessons, and if you ever go to the courts that we have, you can't get a court. So it doesn't seem like a big deal, but to have three courts in addition to the three we have, I think, just regardless of where that is. So maybe the answer isn't eliminating them, but looking at, you know, relocating them or something like that before we just scrap it. So I'm willing to listen to it.
I want as many courts as we can get.
Okay.
I just don't know if this is the right, best place for them.
Yeah, maybe come up with both plans and we'll-
Yeah, I think that'll tell us the most. We'll be able to see, you know, what the, you know, because impervious calculation will impact it, budget will impact it, and just the logistics of fitting it on-site. So we'll be able to see the relative cost and other impacts of both options and make a more informed decision.
Okay, and I guess this is more for staff. We sort of have gone through this process before, so maybe towards the conclusion of tonight, you can sort of let us know how we can actually execute this iteration and sort of go forward with a plan. That'd be helpful to me.
Satish?
Actually, good presentation. I like many of the concepts about this plan about the two pool, but in reality is a pseudo three pool, right? The kids is split into two.
True, that is a fact.
Like, in, in reality is like, in my community, anytime we have a pool closure, people are up in arms. And the kids' section is great, but when you have a recreation, especially for the swim lessons, is there a way to taper the water going from this side to that side so that this section-
Between these two sections?
Yes, so that this section doesn't get affected because when you have continuous classes, that is a component where a person comes in and sees a pool closure, they, they get upset about it. Because when you're planning it, that is a key component of how the water gets into your-
So you're, you're talking about a canam, eliminate any contamination-
Yeah.
-connection between those two. Jeff, did you hear that?
I did not. Can you repeat?
So the, the question was on the leisure pool where it's subdivided into a play area and a class leisure area. The big concern is pool closures from contamination. You know, currently, there's a stair connecting the two, so if, if one's contaminated, they're both shut down presumably. What, what would be the impact of totally separating those so that you, you have that much more flexibility with pool closures?
Sure. Well, the downside to it is we'd have to increase the equipment room because we have three independent systems for pumps, filtration, et cetera. So there'd be a cost and cost of the third system as well as some space constraints in the equipment room.
Yeah, more, more like basically an extra motor and, because plumbing and everything is pretty much Iran, and extra motors, pretty much, because the idea is, the water is very important part of it, that the pool closures are, when you have it, then you need 24 hours or 12 hours to be shut down, and that's very critical when you run programs. My, my whole reason I'm asking these are because we are investing a lot of money and we want to generate, like, every money and not lose, you know, and this has to overall be good for our citizens. We want to keep these programs running smoothly and pool closures are a very critical part of these things.
Let me ask you a question, Jeff. Can we do that without increasing deck space? Separate those two pools?
Uh, yeah, it's-
So, so if that's the case, then it could be a-
Then we're going to be each other, then we lose the stair between them.
Yeah, if that's the case, then it could be a fairly easy cost option to say, you know, to divide, I mean, it's just the equipment costs and the extra room, so you could make the, you know, have that as a variable in the cost model.
The motor is pretty much running independent to the same thing.
Yeah, and the added equipment space, you know, the size of the canopy.
Like, that's, that's good. And, and I concur with Councilmember Schlink where more for the staff is, like, what kind of programs we'll be running, because we are pretty much having a kids' playground, we're having a leisure pool, and how would we basically run programs for the lap swim, like six lanes?
Yeah, the last, the last thing would be one for some, some of the swim lesson programs would be in the lap, lap pool. We'd also have it open for just lap swim time, things like that. Excuse me, some of the leisure pool would be used for some younger children's swim lessons because the water would be more shallow, a little, a little easier to manage them there and not take away from lap lanes. So it just gives us a lot more flexibility in where we locate things. Again, some of the additional pieces that we, that they showed in the slides, the climbing wall, or the inflatable obstacle course, those are things that would maybe take up a few lanes in the middle, like I said, we did them on the weekends, or a few, you know, specific times here and there. That gives us some flexibility that doesn't interrupt some of the other lap swims, some of the other uses. This gives us a lot more flexibility in it. Is that what you're asking?
No, I meant to say like, the overall, you know, we know right now how more, it's an investment we're doing to our community at the same time. Our numbers have to go up, our membership has to go up.
Right.
And how can we, you know, start self, like, like rerun the whole program itself? So it's how the staff basically runs these kind of things.
Yeah, one of the big improvements, we think, was with the, with the recreation pool. It would bring a lot more family use in than we have right now. What we don't have a lot of are parents and young children coming in just to swim because the, there's a limitation on where they can do it. The shallow ends are typically used by swim lessons already at times when they would come in. So we get some use like that, but not as much as I think the community is looking for. Something like this would allow us to maintain or actually increase a lot of our volume of program opportunities. We still have a lot of waiting lists for swim lessons and stroke school and things like that. This would allow us to still meet those, be able to work into that, that waiting list, and also create an opportunity for that family, that family recreational swim who just wants to come in and play. And whether it's in the, in the recreation pool area when we're not doing lessons, it gives them some water to play in, the zero-depth entry and play area, obviously, that's, would be something where we get very, very young children, where we don't really have very much opportunity that way. So I think this does open some doors in terms of programming to a wider market than we're able to right now.
And, and this will be heated water throughout, twelve months, right, pretty much?
It, it would be, correct.
And, so, pretty, so the cost is the biggest part of it, the operating cost for twelve months, how to keep it, and the roof structure and the enclosure will pretty much dictate. Because I like the six points and it would be great because we have only $5.7 million and you have pretty much summed it up very well, keep it to $5 million and put, you know, lecture as a contingency. So would it be helpful to the council and the rest because we, obviously, we fight about, or basically discuss about the tennis courts and other things, but in reality is if there is a dollar number, which is put, okay, the cost of the indoor facility is X numbers or something in your estimates next time or something-
Yeah, that's the intent of this phase.
-pretty much, it will shake up many of the things in what we talk about.
Yep. So that's, that's what I was- That's the intent of this phase, is identify cost with each of these items-
Yeah.
-in options and kind of figure out what, what we can-
Allopart, then, you know, many other things. It's, it's a puzzle for us then, as a council, to discuss what, what stays, what doesn't next. But it's a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess it's my turn, right? I like the concept of the, of the two separate pools that you've drawn. I think you've nailed the six pieces of scope. I, I questioned number three a little bit, which is the existing parking and relocate driveway. To me, that should be whatever the UDO tells us it needs to be. So that's almost, you know, to me, it's not an option. I guess we could build more than the UDO says.
That's what this would be. I believe as the building exists right now, we are actually, I think, slightly more than what the UDO calls, UDO calls for. It really becomes an operational ability because we're afraid, our thought is if we add a lot more recreation opportunity, we're going to need more public, more parking spaces to handle that kind of volume. So this would go beyond what the UDO is likely going to call for.
Numbers, numbers four or five, they are coming together. I think, yeah, to me, it should only almost be four and number five would be the-
You're absolutely right. You won't do one without the other.
Yeah, so, you know, I'd, I'd love to see all six of those accomplished and I think, you know, to, I don't want to be in the weeds too much tonight. I think it's, we'd like to turn it over to you, let you come back with some three conceptual designs, you know, with or without the tennis courts. As far as the time it takes to build, I think we'd all like to get it done as soon as possible, but I, I'd rather do it right the first time because the costs aren't going to be anything less than five years if we do another phase, but I think as long as we have options within that $5 million, you know, if, if we want to spend more, here's what it's going to cost you to get that rock bottom wall, here's what it's going to get you to, get the third section of the pool, you know, segregate things. I think then we can really start making some decisions.
Yeah, I think time is money. So that is my concern, is like, the longer this project is, the higher the costs are. So however we can compress the time schedule, we're going to get more goods or more options for the money that we have to offer the project.
No, no question.
But I think, I think every, you know, that's, that's a wish list. I think you nailed it pretty well and I, I hate to see any of those go away. So I think as a, as a going-in standpoint, this is, you know, this is what you should strive for and then let us start making some budget decisions once you tell us how much things cost and with or without this feature.
Right.
Here's what you can do.
Good.
Now, you know, the $5 million, I know you said the extra .7 is for all the other cost, you know, the soft cost.
Right. And that's just ballpark. We have a cost model, the detailed soft cost, yeah, so it may not be exactly five.
I'm sure you heard the history of this. This was, this bond was supposed to cover a couple park projects, not just this aquatic center. So we have already come up quite a bit and that $5 million was not the $5 million, you know, back in 2012. It was a lower number. So we've already, we've already increased our budget and cut out other future projects in order to accommodate this.
Yeah, and the unfortunate thing is that since we got out of the recession, construction costs are only continuing to climb, so we're-
Yeah, we, we hear it every day.
I just have one, one final question for Matt. I have one final question for Matt. And just something to think about as I look at the options of the courts, whether we're going to have them or not. Have we ever considered, I know we have rental agreements now, but like with USTA league play, like for adult leagues and stuff, I mean, that could be one factor to consider of keeping the courts because then we would have the ability to bring plate, you know, places that are packed out, like Cary Tennis Park or whatever for, you know, number one. Just a question.
Yeah, I think in the end, whatever council decides is the, is the concept they want to go with based on the budget that you all felt comfortable with, we'll program, we'll seek opportunities to program whatever, whatever component pieces become this project in the end. If a tennis court is something that fits well on the property and fits within the budget that council wants, we'll certainly be looking at those kinds of opportunities. We do add a church street now with three Western Wake tennis, and so that certainly, we would certainly look at if we do have the courts there. If not, then we look at them, if they, if courts are then developed in another location in town, we'd look at this, look at that the same way there.
I mean, and we have, if we have a junior program now with the courts in not very good condition, I would imagine that they would improve if they were completely new courts, you know? And so I don't know to the effect of revenue, how much revenue we can generate, but certainly it'd be one thing to consider of, you know, walking away from, you know, income that we can generate for, you know, so just food for thought.
I just-
Yeah, so if everyone could kind of give their closing, closing points here, so we-
No, I just, just so I'm not labeled a tennis court hater. I know, I know you didn't say that. I'm just, I know you didn't.
You, you said that focus on exercise rooms for now-
Yes.
-and maybe hold off on the courts. You did not say not have any.
I know, and I'm, I'm, I'm not picking on you, Steve, I'm not picking on you. I'm just saying, I think I've seen this train coming down the tracks. I'm not sure we're going to have enough money for everything. And I'm okay with the priority list as we see on that chart. And I think I started by saying I like the idea that we're going to get three examples to kind of look at options. Thank you, we're going to get three options and the first option will include everything. I even said that, so, and that meant the tennis courts, but I, I just, you know, we're, it's going to be an issue, I think, and I'm, I'm okay with letting them go on this site because, knowing that we can build them else, we have another location to build them. So just to, just to clarify, I do love tennis courts and I know they're used in town.
I haven't heard the word diving board anywhere. Is that something not done at municipal levels? Diving board?
Not, not very much. There would be some slight liability increases that would come with it. In reality, we don't know that we would gain that much with them. And so it's something that we, at staff, wasn't recommending we move forward with, but that's something that can certainly be discussed. We just didn't, we don't see the need for them programmatically.
Okay, and your guys' thoughts on diving boards in general?
In, in general, that's what we're seeing as well in the YMCA's that we've done, but I'll let Jeff weigh in on that one. Jeff, you still with me?
Yes.
The, the question was about diving boards.
Yeah, diving boards really, we see two avenues with diving boards. Either it's something that's been around for decades and people want to keep it, or, you know, the more current thinking is the increase of liability, increased risk, that's why a lot of them have gone away, as well as the need for deeper water. So not only would you be adding, we'd be adding several feet of water depth, volume, et cetera, to the pool, which would be additional cost. The other thing is, you know, you're taking up a fair amount of area that's used one person at a time. So outside of competitive diving, recreational diving has really been on a steep decline over the last decade.
Okay, and also, I don't know, it would be helpful for these gentlemen to know, get more of a feel for whether or not we're leaning towards the brick and mortar, the glass, or the, sort of the plastic shape.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary this time.
Okay, how about whether or not we feel airflow is important? If we want, if we're okay with it being totally enclosed or if we want at least some airflow with like big doors?
You could do-
Well, if you only get three choices.
But you could do airflow with any of the, any of those things that we saw.
Yeah, and, and the three options are more intended as, as, as layout options. Within that, there may be variables of types of enclosure. That's what we're thinking, types of enclosure and other amenities so that it can, we can expand the, the choices and the options and have more variables for cost.
Okay, because I think that'll be an important thing to, for us to decide and give input to. Thank you.
Michael and Vicky.
I just wanted to kind of close the loop so that we could progress to the next topic. Love the six, you know, prioritized list. I think staff did an excellent job at prioritizing, so I don't have any issues with that. I am very interested in compressing the timeline for this project. I said it before that I think time is money and also the patience of the public. We are considering many options for compressing. I suggested phasing, but I really like Councilmember Colley's suggestion of completely closing down the facility in order to accelerate the construction and completion of the project. That would also meet the goal for me. And then finally, the tennis courts, I am a fan of them, although we might not be able to implement the tennis courts at this site, but we should consider other sites if they are removed from the scope of this project.
Michael, I'm going to give you a last word here.
Thank you. Does your responsibilities end after, excuse me, after the bid or do you go through the bid and do you control that? I mean-
We typically provide construction administration services as well, so we'll review submittals, we'll make regular visits to the job site, participate in owner, contractor, architect meetings and-
Keep them on track, so.
Answer our pressure, yeah, all the way through.
Thank you.
I want to thank the team from Rasio for coming out tonight. I want to thank the team from Ratio for coming out tonight. We look forward to our meeting next week with the three designs. I don't know what you guys are waiting on. We've got a good drawing. So, we okay? Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break here. We'll reconvene at 7:50. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and adjourn here. We're on section three of the agenda for the evening. This is the Town Center Core Project Planning and Discussion. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Town Manager Todd Wright to introduce our guests and kick off the discussion. Todd?
Mayor, council members, we are excited that we have information to discuss about the Town Center Core project, information that will help us move the demonstration project forward. In our discussions tonight, we want to acknowledge the partner agencies that are active for the demonstration project. We will update you on the project timeline. In fact, we'll share information with you tonight that's been revised even since what we sent out to you over the weekend. Rich Pol will give us an infrastructure update. Little will present the design concepts. In that discussion, we're really looking for high-level feedback, you know, your thoughts on the density, scale of buildings, and things like orientation of buildings. Tonight's meeting is not really the time to have discussions such as, you know, detailed building design. Those opportunities will come in the near future. Little, I'm sorry, DFI will facilitate discussion on the development strategy for both the public and private partnership opportunities. And so, let's get started with introductions and I'm just going to ask our partnering agencies to introduce themselves. We'll start with you, Eric.
Hi, Eric Thomas, Development Finance Initiative, project manager on this project.
I'm Joel DeBrowski. I'm with Little. I'm senior project designer.
I'm Julie McLaren with Little. I lead the community studio, the community studio in our Durham office.
Good evening. My name is John DeHarrell. I'm with Wake County Facilities Design Construction and I'll be the project manager for the library.
My name is Jason Horton, Deputy Director for Wake County Community Services, department that includes the public library system.
Good evening. I'm Mark Forsteri. I'm the Director of Facility Design and Construction for Wake County.
Okay, we have seven partnering agencies that are active on the demonstration project. You can see the list there. Obviously, the town is the project developers. We are utilizing DFI as a project consultant to provide expertise in the site analysis, in the financial analysis, and to facilitate the process to, to get private partnerships that are much needed for a successful project. Little Architecture is leading the efforts with the site design for the demonstration project. They're also doing the full design for the library project. We have Kimley Horn taking a lead in street design. We have Withers Ravenel taking a lead with stormwater design and, of course, we have the library, Wake County developing the library project, and we have our friends at Public Service Gas of North Carolina taking care of the gas line relocation project. Timeline-wise, there have been some modifications, but we all know that the library schedule is driving the project. And while there's been some modifications, the end goal still remains the same, that we desire to open the library up by the end of 2019. At this time, I will ask Jason Horton if he wants to comment and give us any updates on the library project timeline.
Sure. First of all, I would like to say, I want to thank the staff for the town of Morrisville. I think over this process, over the last few months, they've kept us involved and informed as to what's going on with the partners that he listed before, and that's helped us get a better understanding of what's going on and how it may affect the library project. So, again, I want to thank staff for doing that. As far as the schedule, I think Todd has it up on the screen. What I would, what I can do is to steal it down a little bit further with some highlights as to what we're hoping to get over the next few, couple of years. One is, we would like to start moving into just a phase we call design at the end of this month, assuming everything's in line. We're able to do that with the goal of getting to a point where you can submit plans for, to begin the site approval process later in the year. Assuming that all goes well, which we think it will, we'll then position us for moving into the bid phase in the spring of 2018 with construction beginning in the summer of 18, with the library opening about one year later. We've made a few adjustments to the schedule, but that's really driven by Wake County staff for our library projects. We have a number of projects that are going on within the county. We have new facilities going up in Fuquay Barina, downtown Cary, renovation project up in Wake Forest, new facility in the North Hills area, and renovations in Knightdale at East Regional Center, Olivia Rainey Library. Am I missing? That's most of them. And so, sometimes whenever you have multiple projects, we try to align the schedules to make sure that staff has the capacity to manage those projects. But also, it takes a lot of time and effort to stock those libraries. It's not as simply taking a book out of a bag and putting it on a shelf. There's a record that's associated with that. Getting the library's system, the books, to be part of the inventory that is searchable, that patrons can then come in and use is quite complicated. So, with a number of projects either coming online or being, facilities being expanded, we wanted to make sure that we had the capacity to handle that as well. But the schedule that Todd's presenting is reflective of what we're working with as well.
As you can see, we are prepared to develop the rest of the demonstration project concurrently with the library project. And there are benefits to taking that approach, and I think those benefits will come out in our discussions tonight. And at this point, I'd ask Eric Thomas if there's any updates he wants to give us on the demonstration project timeline.
Yeah, so this is the timeline up on the screen is reflective of what we feel is a realistic time that we can get a developer on board to coordinate a project with the library development. That's the end goal of this, to have a shared public-private partnership, to share facilities and share construction timeline so that we don't have too much one project going on early and then a project going on later and we can't share in costs and benefit from each other. So, over the next few months, you'll be seeing a lot of DFI to talk through the financial partnership strategy. Again, tonight is to discuss the big design decisions, density, scale, orientation of facilities, and then as we make decisions on that, refine the financial program and financial partnership strategy based on refined site program needs that you all, the council, would like to see.
Okay, Rich is going to give us an infrastructure update?
Want to advance the slide, Todd? There we go. All right, so just to update everybody, there's kind of three major components that we're working on right now in parallel. The roundabout and related roadways, so that's that roundabout on Town Hall Drive, the Foxglove Avenue and the Carolina Street extensions, the stormwater facility that we're looking to have that regional BMP hopefully in that location just downstream, or between the Greenway and Town Hall Drive, and then the gas line relocation. For the roundabout and related roadways, Kimley Horn Associates has made a lot of progress in the last month or two. We're beyond 25% designs. The entire design team, Little Architecture, DFI, Withers and Ravenel as well, since their stormwater design is integrated somewhat with that actual street design. Everybody's collaboratively been working on that to ensure that, once they've got that information set, which is where we're at at this point, everybody can kind of start flowing with the rest of their project. So, I expect to have probably 50% plans from them here in the next few weeks. They had some coordination to do with the drainage design, but for all intents and purposes, we kind of, we know where the circle is going to be. We know how the roads are going to connect up. We know where our right-of-way lines are. So, that's allowed the rest of the design team to move forward with their preliminary analysis. From the stormwater standpoint, currently, Withers and Ravenel has gotten all the base data that they need for that. They're preparing some of the background calculations. So, once they post-process the survey information, they can really get into the hard-nosed engineering to make sure that we can get all the drainage from the downtown area to a future wetland and as well as doing a kind of a cost or an accounting of how much land, how much impervious area we can actually treat at that regional facility so that we can backfeed that into the design of the overall town center build-out and understand where in the future we may have some additional needs that we have to account for. Both of those, both those two projects are tracking pretty much along the same schedule where design and permitting should be finalized sometime mid to late summer, prepared to potentially bid as early as the fall of 2017. The gas line relocation, we've had some great, great news from PSNC. They've been able to pull their project forward, which was a large capital project to replace the entire, an entire two-mile segment of the gas line that currently runs straight through the middle of our town center area. As part of that, they've just begun their survey and permitting process. That's a few-month process for them, so they could begin construction on their replacement of their line as early as midsummer essentially. Under that scenario, they expect to potentially be ready to move the, excuse me, relocate the existing gas line sometime as early as August of this year. So, the onus is really on us to help ensure that we provide them all the information on our end of where we're at with our design and keep them up to speed so they can incorporate their design and permitting needs as well. All in all, like we said earlier, you know, the design teams, you know, the whole team has been able to make a lot of progress here over the last few months. All the ore seemed to be roamed in the same direction, so, you know, we hope to stay on track and be able to deliver all those by mid to late summer and be prepared to start construction on the larger two aspects later this year. That's it.
All right, now Julie and Joel present the site design concepts. Joel, if you want to, I'll try to drive this thing for you. And let me just say, council members, so we've moved to the second slide presentation now.
Multi-layered. Okay. I think everybody's.
When you flip, I'll flip, okay?
Okay, all right. So, the first slide you're seeing there, we thought we would just give an overall site plan. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the project site, the demonstration project site that we're talking about. But this is just to give you sort of an overview. The buildings that you see there highlighted in color are the buildings that we're in and the town buildings. And then, in the demonstration project area, we've just highlighted that corner property that we'll be talking about for use for the library. And so, the next slide is just showing you that Town Center master plan concept that we started looking at. And so, we've tried to stay in keeping with the discussions and planning that has happened around Town Center Drive, Jeremiah Street, and coming from the roundabout that we just talked about, Carolina Street, and the block being formed also by Foxglove Drive is the proposed name of that street. So, for this phase of the project, we are looking at this high level. We were charged with developing multiple concepts, just site layout scenarios of how all these pieces in part could work on this site. There's been much discussion about how many acres that we have, what we're working with. We're trying to make sure that everything is going to fit within some of the parameters that we're looking at from a cost standpoint. But these are high-level test fits, looking at making sure that the library program is going to work, that our parking structure and the residential and retail office opportunities are shown. And so, some of the concepts that we've been thinking about and discussing with this block are that this is, this is an urban, urban design, an urban block, and the rest of the Town Center plan, there's a lot of density there. So, we're thinking out of those terms, which is a little bit unlike some of the other things in the area. But we're looking at the demographic. We're talking with DFI back and forth about what is the right mix of residential and office, what kind of residential might be appealing with this property. So, we've been looking at some of that. We've been looking at that roundabout and the prominence there on the corner and how that site is going to work to maximize the pedestrian experience and interest in that site. And then, scale character, how it fits in with Morrisville has been chief among some of the things that we've been thinking about. The whole scale, the volumes, the mix of how this steps up from residential to a parking structure, parking structure to a multi-level residential complex, back down to a one-story 8,500 square foot library there on the corner. So, we're looking at that mix and what makes sense there. We're looking at flexibility and logistics. These are building block scenarios. There's lots of flexibility. The components can be mixed and matched in different ways. And so, we've been looking at what's most efficient, how, there are lots of opportunities here. And so, we're just thinking of what's going to be flexible, what a developer might be interested in. And of course, with all of this and especially with Wake County, they've been very flexible about the parking. We don't want to have this demonstration block with a large parking lot. So, we are looking at the parking deck, making sure that we have the essential accessible spaces and short-term parking needs that the library is going to have, but also looking at street parking and other ways that we can have the parking that's going to be needed for everything in the future build-out of some of the other spaces within the town center. Again, that efficiency and the planning, the economies that we can have and how things are juxtaposed on the site and worked together has also been a concern for us. And, you know, the library is really the first project that's funded, it's ready to go. We're getting ready to start planning. So, we really see that as a spur for development and the library as a jewel. But, so we've been working through multiple concepts and Joel is going to dive into those. And what we're looking for, I think that what the town would like to see is just an acknowledgement that this is the right direction to go. You're not going to see any finished designs. We're not, we're showing volume and scale and how things can be put on the site. There's really nothing here that talks about what the buildings are going to look like or anything like that at this point. So, I will turn it over to Joel.
Thank you, Julie. Wanted to show you just a quick example, and this is actually quite cropped out, of all the studies we've been doing sort of behind the scenes up until this meeting. We started out with a lot of hand sketching. We've been tracking this both in computer model to get, make sure that we have accurate numbers that we're talking about, and we have, as we mentioned before, the right-of-ways and the street layout to work with. So, we have some accuracy, but it enables us to study things very quickly. And we've been working with DFI, with Kimley Horn, with other members of the town here to run through all those scenarios very quickly and kind of pull things out, question some assumptions that we've been going along. One of the things that we came to a conclusion about, for example, after studying it in multiple locations, is the general location of the library, not necessarily the shape of the library or exactly how it sits on the site, but in terms of its general location towards that, towards that roundabout. It started there in the original master plan with DFI and after questioning sort of where could it go in a, in a town center scheme? Do you make it the civic center and put it up towards the corner, sort of inset into the block where it becomes a primary focal point, deeper set into the block? Do you put it away from all the commotion and so forth that you might have on a busy street scene, pull it into a quieter corner? We ended up backwards started in, for example, as an example, we've also looked a lot at, you know, how you might with this structured parking scenario because we need the density and maximize the parking for not only this block but potentially future blocks. A lot of buildings you'll see in downtown areas wrap that in what's called a liner, but it's called Texas Liner. You take housing and you just turn that around all four sides, maybe create a courtyard on one side, something like that. It's great for hiding a parking deck. It's not so great in terms of efficiencies because you have a lot of corridor, you have extra cores, things like that, that go into something that maybe isn't as economical in that sense. It's something that I know we have to be concerned about UDO here, obviously, but weighing that against the efficiencies that we need to get with our housing and even with some things like a central location, for example, for the parking deck, you kind of split the difference, so to speak, as you'll see in the schemes. Anyway, without spending more time on this slide about all these sketches, I wanted to introduce the first scheme. What we've done is we've come back with two options and they're very closely related, but they really kind of balance all the elements of the site together pretty well. We were looking at how much we can maximize the housing, but at the same time, we thought about, lot about what feels like a comfortable scale for the housing in a place like this. And we don't see much in Morrisville, it's beyond four stories. There's a. There's a little bit of five-story you get towards the airport and things like that. It starts to feel a little out of scale and then you've got a lot of townhomes and, and single-family homes not too far away. We wanted to make sure that we didn't just sort of erupt out of the earth with a huge urban center, but we stepped up gradually so it transitions nicely. So all these schemes essentially try to work with that, that agreement of, of a four-story kind of maximum to it. Obviously, you see some elements that come up every once in a while, stair to a roof, things like that. We also, if you look on the left-hand side of this first option, see that that's actually a three-story building towards Town Hall Drive and towards Jeremiah Road on the backside of the site. That's part of that transition where three stories and depending how architecturally you treat it can be very comfortable across from two stories with a pitched roof kind of townhome or, or single-family home. In some schemes, you'll see that we offer a little more transition buffer, things like that. In the foreground, you have the library, it's that bright orange piece right there. As we said, you know, the configuration of that, when we get into the design of it, will change a lot, you'll see a lot of different shapes. But it's, it's a branch library, it's about 8,500 square feet to 9,000 square feet, it's not very big. It's one-story. Granted, the one-story is a little bit taller than most, you know, it's not going to be a one-story house, it's going to be more substantial than that. But we want to make sure it has, for lack of a better term, breathing room, that it feels that it's comfortably settled in that site without feeling that there's some giant four-story building looming over it. So what you have in these schemes is in order to get that breathing room, we try, try to create, even though it's an urban setting, an interior kind of series of courts or, or lawns or what have you. Some of them will be dedicated to residential amenities. So you can see, there might be some way of dividing that space for residents so that they have their amenities, because a lot of residential is driven by those amenity spaces these days. You're competing against your private development in other parts of the township where they have pools, they have outdoor grills, they have things like that. We want to make sure that you're, we're competitive and we have enough of those kinds of amenities, even in an urban setting, that we're trying to create here. We still want a certain amount of surface parking, some of that is, as Julie said, just because you have things like accessible handicap spaces that want to be, you know, down on the ground fairly centralized. It's, provides some flexibility, it allows the parking deck to not be quite so tall. So we have about 50 spaces spread around this block. The parking deck itself is, is fairly compact, like you would see in, in an urban setting. It has to go fairly high. Now, the top level where it says parking deck, and you see that, that arrow pointing to it, is surface parking. On the, on the roof of that, we won't, we don't roof over parking deck typically, it's a lot of extra expense. That pretty much matches the four-story height of the buildings, just because buildings do have a roof on them. And you can see on this site that we tried to divide up the space a little in different ways so that the retail on the corner of Carolina Street here and on the right edge of that is an extension of Foxglove Drive. If you look at the ground plan, it's probably the best way to look at this, the yellow spaces are labeled "commercial." The commercial space can, is assumed to be mostly retail, there's opportunity there for a certain amount of office space, it's all on the ground floor. There's a question of how, how viable commercial space will be as you get away from that intersection, which is going to be sort of the heart of that, of that town center. So in order to kind of protect that investment, we moved as much of it onto that side as we can. You'll see in the other scheme, we try a different approach to it that we'd like your feedback on. And we pull the services into the block, you can see some dumpsters, compactors, things like that. There's potential there to share some of those services between residential in terms of one yard, to kind of minimize the impact on the site, the commercial spaces and so forth. The library itself has fairly minimal, but a certain amount of service that it requires. And what we end up doing is we end up putting some of those amenities on the interior of the block so they can share on those courtyard spaces. The exterior of the block, in this case, it's important to point out, and it's better to see as you go to the next plan on the upper levels, the upper levels are almost entirely residential, that public library is below. And you can see, we've dashed in a conceptual sort of corridor so that we get more efficiency out of this unit by making it a deeper unit, get double-loaded corridors essentially. It's more cost-effective that way. You still have a certain amount of wrapping around the parking deck. And that's important because while the parking deck is a backdrop to the library and we won't, we want to think about an architectural screen for that, and we'll talk about implications, what that means in terms of planning and budget. The exterior of this scheme wraps with housing so that it always has that more residential feel towards the housing. The other scheme, we can probably move straight into that one because they're so similar. If you flip around to the next scheme, option two, basically everything's the same in terms of residential density, in terms of location of the library, in terms of a lot of elements. The main variation is how we deal with this parking deck and how we deal with the housing on that corner of the site towards Town Hall Drive. In this case, what we try to do is maximize the residential kind of experience of that courtyard. So everyone is facing in towards that. And the library looks out towards more residential. And on the ground floor, we've split up, in this case, the commercial space so that you have, if you look on the ground floor of that plan on the next page, next slide, the commercial space here is split. So the program talks a little bit ambiguously about whether it's all retail, a mix of office, and how that might work. This offers an alternative scenario where we have retail towards the corner of Carolina and Foxglove, where it's most viable, we believe, in the long-term sort of planning of this, of this district. We built commercial to help screen the parking deck and work off of the library. It would have to be office commercial, things for appointments, financial planning, you know, kid, even daycare drop-off, things like that, with some surface parking right in front, so there's very convenient parking for them, or somebody can come into the parking deck and park behind and access the commercial space there. We've tried to rotate it because it's a little more visible from Town Hall Drive, but it's not the kind of place in this smaller bar against the parking deck that you would go get a slice of pizza or, you know, have, have an iced dinner necessarily, just because the visibility factor is really important for those kinds of spaces. In this case as well, the residential amenities work very similarly, the service works very similarly. The parking deck is turned a little bit and because it exposes two faces towards Jeremiah Street and Town Hall Drive, it requires more thought about the screening. The thought here is that while there may be additional screening here, there's a fairly large buffer along Jeremiah to those townhomes. And this rotating the deck the way we have it allows more of a vegetated screen on this block as well, so that we can use trees and maybe an architectural screen for that, but really maximize the kind of activity in those courts and towards Carolina Street and towards the drop, the roundabout and so forth. The upper floors, you can see, are very similar, we've essentially just wrapped the housing the other way, so they participate in that side of things. All things considered, I think everybody has their own preferences. Last time, we heard a few preferences from groups that preferred one scheme over the other. We'd certainly appreciate your comments on that. And Eric, of course, will have follow-up about some of the economics of this and how this may work in terms of financial model and also in terms of, you know, some of those logistics and things we're talking about, phasing and so forth.
Just a real quick question on this one, it says, "public library below."
Yes.
What does that mean?
It's a one-story library, so I didn't want people to get confused because of the color that it's some four-story library sitting up in the air. It's down below where this is cut. So you have, if you look in the 3D view, you have four levels of residential, but it's just a one-level library. So below just means you're looking down on it, you're not actually up.
So that library is not, it's not changing in any of these situations?
Not yet. I mean, we'll look at different designs and, you know, that's just one shape for it.
Okay. Now Eric will facilitate our development strategy discussion, and we are moving to the third handout.
Thanks. Yeah.
Thanks Joel for putting all the work into these concepts. So as I mentioned earlier, tonight is a, we've been talking about the demonstration project now for several months. You can see that there are a lot of members and partners that came together to get this concept on the screen tonight. You know, we're dealing with a site that right now doesn't have street connectivity, there are stormwater implications, so there's a lot of thought that went into, how do we organize the streets to make a efficient building block for, to attract a private developer to help offset the costs of the public infrastructure that would take place in this concept? So tonight, we're just going to review these concepts, or one of these concepts that Little showed tonight, talk about the timeline as we talked about a little earlier, just go over that again. Discuss the private investment piece and the public investments, what, what is this cost at a high level? We're showing the high level tonight because we want you to focus on the design aspects. There's a lot that we want to make sure that you all are comfortable with, density, scale, orientation of facilities, that will impact the financial model as we move forward. There's been a lot of discussion about parking deck. Right now, these, these images and concepts are showing a parking structure. The idea of the parking structure, we'll get into that a little later, is that it can benefit not just the private development component, but add spaces for the library use and for other town center core uses as we move forward with the town center as well. Critical decisions that we hope to discuss tonight, primarily around the site design and the siting, and then the next steps. What do we, how do we take this information? What do we bring back to you all so that we can have a more refined financial model and concept? So again, I want to go over the program piece of what we just talked about with Little. This is again approximately 180 residential units. Something worth noting is that in the real estate development field in this area, generally what we see as a, a strong number to have for residential units to attract private developers to the market is approximately 200 residential units. We feel that in the Morrisville market that we can get, we would like to have larger units, not smaller, it's not as urban of a market, so we can cut down the number of units to satisfy the market that we would see people moving to Morrisville to live here. Right now in this, this scene, this, this view here, there's 20,000 square feet of ground floor retail. Again, as Joel illustrated in his, his discussion of the concept, some of that's on the interior of the site, not as visible from Carolina Street and Town Hall Drive, meaning that it's, again, not the ground floor retail that people would walk by and go in, but more of the professionals and businesses of that nature. This is a structured parking deck in this, approximately 350 spaces. Again, approximately 50 surface spaces included in the site and around the perimeter site on street parking, 8,500 square foot library, the traffic circle of Town Hall Drive, Foxglove Road Extension, Carolina Street Road Extension, and Gas Street Location. Those are all elements that have gone into this site concept. I think it's worth showing this slide right here is, this is one project, we're calling the demonstration project, essentially Phase 1A of your town center as we move forward. This is what this concept is in relation to the rest of the town center core that we showed at the end of last year. As you can see, this is a significant piece, it has public facilities on it, it has potential parking structure, it's got public space, it's got private green space, it's got a lot of features that we've talked about as goals for the town center core. Some of those incorporation of public spaces and then retail and public spaces in a walkable environment. We feel that Little has really achieved that with the concept that they've put on the screen tonight. Part of this, also, public-private partnership, how can we minimize the cost to the town? And that's something we're going to explore once we can finalize a design approach that we all feel comfortable with. And then again, as we call it, the demonstration project, this is establishing momentum for the town center. This is a project that shows the town can be committed to public investments and partner with private developers to realize one unified goal for the town center. So that's where this project fits in to, to the full town center core development. So we'll get into the timeline that we've showed earlier tonight. And again, this is, in a, in a, in this scenario, we can see all these elements align so that the construction of the private development, the approximately 200,000 square feet of residential and retail aligns with the library construction, so that there, there's a, a relationship between the building, constructing, and utilizing of parking in this scenario, so that there's shared expenses versus each having their own independent site design, site concept, and no shared spaces. So as Jason mentioned earlier, fall of 2019 is the, the day which the library opens, and that's if we are able to move forward with deciding on a design approach, putting out an RFP, well, then finalizing a public-private partnership strategy for some of the infrastructural pieces, and then putting out an RFP for developers, soliciting those developers, getting an agreement in place over the next six months, we can have it aligned so that end of 2019 is the date that we can see these two pieces coming together at the same time. So the financial piece, as I talked about earlier, this is, again, a number that we've been working with Little over the last couple of months to develop this concept. This number will shift if we all, if the council decides that they want to see a different concept on this space, if they feel that the density is too high or they would like to see more density, if they feel that they would like to see more retail or more public open space, if they want to orient structures in different ways. But what we, what we see in this concept is approximately 220,000 square feet, which is a $30 million project in our financial model. And what we're showing here in the last slide or last column is the incremental tax revenue that would a town would see from this project, based on a year-two valuation of the project, which is right at $133,000 annually increased to the, to the tax roll.
Does, does that 30 million include the structured parking?
That does not.
Okay, that's...
So that, so that's, that's right here for the, and then we're going to talk about that once we get to the parking plan. So we've, but that right there includes the 200,000 is approximately 180,000 for the residential, 20,000 for the retail plus some amenity space, you know, other service spaces in the, in the private development.
So that's just, it's not net with all the debts, you know, it's just the revenue stream?
That's just the revenue off of the incremental taxes off this. So that doesn't, this also doesn't factor in at this point, we'll show it in a couple more slides, potential revenue that you can generate off the deck, and there's also the management operating expenses, debt service off of those elements as well.
Okay. There's many different elements, yeah.
Yeah, this would just be tax, the incremental tax revenue for the project. So these are the public investment pieces that would be associated with this first phase, that we're seeing as public investment infrastructural pieces. We've talked about the Kimley Horn working on the roadway construction. So Carolina Street currently dead ends approximately 300 linear feet or 350 linear feet from Town Hall Drive. This would be extending that to create a connected Carolina Street all the way through from Church Street to Town Hall Drive. Traffic circle, that would be developing a traffic circle that can bring people into the future town center core. Right now, being that Town Hall Drive is a median, it would be only essentially right in, right out from Carolina Street. Town Hall Drive is one way that we viewed as a, as a potential to get people into the town center core, to essentially spin people in to draw people into the town center. Also as a way to alleviate traffic concerns in this area as well. Gas line relocation, Rich mentioned earlier, the PSNC working to relocate the gas line that currently runs through the middle of the site and located along Town Hall Drive at no cost to the town. A stormwater, so this project also, as part of the town center core, is, is moving or, or taking care of the stormwater from the Church Street townhomes on the north side of Jeremiah Street, as well as projected stormwater impacts from this development, which were coming in right now at $185,000. Those stormwater ponds, detention ponds, is an expansion plan right now of the current pond on the southwest side of Town Hall Drive. So right now, we're looking at, and I don't know the exact figures, I think we're developing that right now, how much more capacity the pond would have that could accommodate future growth phases as well. But right now, this, the pond and this figure is accommodating the Church Street townhomes on the north side of Jeremiah, as well as the development on this site. Foxglove Street Extension, creating a full block. Right now, there's no north-south running streets throughout the site, there's Carolina and Scoggins, and then there's no connection north-south besides Church Street and Town Hall Drive. So looking at Foxglove Street Extension as, how we view it in terms of the fiscal year investment, we don't see Foxglove Street as being one of the more critical pieces. Carolina Street is critical, town, the, the traffic circle is critical, but that could be an investment, not necessarily falling in 2017, 2018, but that could be 2018, 2019. So it wouldn't have to take all these public investments all in the same year. And then wanted to include in this, design costs for the stormwater streets at $500,000. So these are the figures of the public investments that are going into the demonstration project, library with private investment component. Does anyone have any question? Do you all, if we could pause here, stop here for...
Clarify, I, we really should add our land cost to this slide. We just spent $100,000 the other day on a piece of land and... We just spent a hundred thousand the other day on a piece of land and...
Yeah, I was a little worried about the land sale price versus what we paid for, so it's just a representation transparency.
Want to be clear with the public, what our public investment is beside, and so if you could, if you could add the land costs as, for the demonstration site.
Some is going to be donated to the library, right?
Exactly. And that's the arrangement that the town has with the county.
And the 10 acres.
Yeah.
The 10 acres, like...
And how we view it.
This is just demonstration.
Which includes 10 acres.
10 acres includes the demonstration site.
And take the library site out of that. So which is the investment?
Part of the investment of the town is the land for the library as well. I'd like to see all of it disclosed, if possible. Although, you know, it's a different economic twist, right? But that way, we know how much we're investing in the library and that public investment piece.
Yeah, and the land has been acquired at different, you know, intervals and at different price per acres over many areas.
Totally understand the market value.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think we get into that in the next slide. So if there are any more questions with these projected public investments for the demonstration project site, these we feel are the essential, you know, right now, we're sort of working with very minimal infrastructure in this side of Morrisville. Currently, Carolina Street and Skoggan Street are sort of one and a half lanes at asphalt put on some ground, not a lot of...
So those would be improved because they're substandard possibly to current requirements for those kind of streets, or?
Well, and what we're showing here is, these are projected dollar amounts based on, you know, a full build-out of curbs, gutters, sidewalks, but these aren't the full, the linear footage of all of Carolina Street. These are essentially the square that is around the demonstration project, tying from Jeremiah, Foxglove down over to Town Hall Drive, and not the full build-out and full rebuild of Carolina Street.
That is opportunity, but that's outside the scope, yes.
The three, like the Marshall Carpenter, we just, you know, put 3.5 million dollars, so it's just era.
I can't hear.
Yeah, the 3.5, I think for the Marshall Carpenter, the lab fund that we put, that's a big investment. It's pretty close to the, you know, the town center. So that is also a public investment that should go in there because that should not be...
I think we have to be careful what we're assigning as public investment to this.
I think, I think staff is clear, you want to know what we've put into the project up till this point, which we can get for you, what Eric is talking about, about what we need from here forward with public investments, but we can gather that information as well to give the whole picture.
And we do, and we do understand the property acquisition that went to extending Carolina Street, we can add that in.
Yeah, to secure the site.
So the parking investment, what we've shown, and this is obviously a major point of conversation, and we can show you the costs associated with what a 350-space parking deck would look like on this site. We have, we research comps all around this area, neighboring communities to find what a going, what a parking deck is developed for. There's a lot of factors that go into the cost of a parking structure. What we're showing here is a 350-space parking deck. That's a way, you know, the footprint that Little developed is an efficient, is a very efficient parking structure. What we, why we sized it that way is to accommodate the library needs, the private development, the residential and retail needs, as well as have some parking left over for other town center core functions. It's in the master plan across the street from a town green, which we talked about, programming on the town green. It's, so there's a lot of public functions that can use this parking structure. And so that's how it was sized, to accommodate those public uses moving forward. Obviously, you take a floor of the deck off, you take out pretty much 75 parking spaces, lower the cost of the deck, you don't have as many left over for public use. And what we could also mention is, you can take it down to just private use of parking on this and not have any spaces left over for the public use for the library. So that's something that we all want, you know, we want to talk with you all about that and understand your comfort with the parking situation. But what we see here is, for a 350-space deck, between $17,000 of space and to $24,000 of space, those are in line with what we see in neighboring communities of these types of decks. There's a lot of, that goes into that. There's a list of factors that we would have to talk about to understand how comfortable you are with parking as a public investment versus not wanting it at all. But as I mentioned earlier, the density and the scale of the residential development drives a lot of how we size these elements. The material choice for the parking deck, whether it's cast-in-place or pre-cast, would drive costs, is, as Joel and Julie have shown in the concepts, they've wrapped two sides of the parking structure. Oftentimes, we don't want to show a parking structure on all four sides, it kind of looks out of place, it doesn't have the same sort of, it doesn't have an attractiveness that we would want to see in a town center core. So we've wrapped it on two sides with residential, leaving two other sides as open. There's ways to screen those, green screens, really interesting art pieces that you can have on those, but those, again, would add money to the base cost of the parking deck. And so, and then those are the, really the factors that would determine the cost. And then again, as I mentioned, the public interest in having a parking structure to serve the town center core and its future growth. And so what we see here is, it's approximately between $6 million and $8.4 million if we're looking at 17,000 to $24,000 of space. And cash flow. This top line is infrastructural improvements, and again, this is depending on parking strategy. I don't want to assume anything that you all have made any decisions, and then there's a lot to discuss, and a lot of partnership and financing strategy that needs to go in place. And we've been meeting with finance director to talk about how we would finance a piece like this, you know, let's talk about the separate components, the infrastructural pieces, but let's think about how we could finance all these investment pieces together. And you're looking at, with the $2.5 million of road and stormwater investments to date, a annual debt service of approximately 562 to 785, depending on, again, the cost that we have and the types of finishes that we would want to have for this parking structure. However, as I mentioned earlier, there is, there are revenues that can be generated off of the parking itself, and revenues off of the incremental taxes that this project would, that the town would receive. So for a $30 million project, we're seeing approximately $133,000 in incremental tax revenue to the town. You have estimated annual parking deck revenue of $225,000. That right there is a master lease from the private developer to lease spaces out of the deck. This is assuming a town-owned and operated deck. There's other ways that you can do it. There would be, the town could lease spaces if they wanted spaces for their town center from the developer, it would have to lease at a market rate. But right now, we're sort of going with the scenario at this point of town-owned and operated parking deck, but approximately $225,000 of parking revenue generated off this deck. And then what I wanted to show here was the land sale. The town isn't giving away the land to the private developer, it's selling the land that the private development sits on to the developer. And so that right there is approximately $375,000 that the town would receive. Obviously, it's not an annual revenue, it's a one-time, but that would, that would factor into the overall financing strategy that the town would take on for this project. Any, we want to, let's maybe pause here and ask some questions and discuss this.
I just let that other speak, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, my question is that, you know, what I've observed is that there's two ways of looking at this. I mean, what I'm trying to get my arms around is, assuming we buy into these plans, at what point are we in the driver's seat in terms of selling this concept? Because you take Cary for example, I was a little bit skeptical a few years ago when I saw a lot of the, you know, infrastructure they were doing. And now, when I go to that downtown, I see, you know, a combination of what I see in a lot of successful downtowns, arts, homegrown restaurants, breweries tied closely to innovation, coworking spaces, which then lure in a good demographic, a Morrisville technology, you know, companies. And then it starts building out. So in that case, it was, I get the impression that it was individual businesses coming and saying, well, I want to bring Bond Brother Beer now there, or I want to bring this here, whereas a few years ago, they weren't even looking at coming to Chatham Street. So is that a way sometimes this will play out? Or is it going, is this built on the assumption that we're going to sell it to a larger developer, whoever that is, like, you know, Durham had Blue Devil, and Winston had Wexford, you know, the big partners that come in. So I know that's, you don't have to answer that today, I just wanted to give you, I'm trying to think, big picture?
Yeah.
In terms of, how does this work and at what point? I mean, so what you're saying is that we make the public investments first, right? To get it ready. And then what if a year and a half ago from now, someone says, hey, I've been hearing about this, and I want to open up a restaurant in the town center or a brewery?
Yeah. And I wanted to clarify, it's not the public investments first that, it's not saying that you have to build this and then all the other pieces will come in. The road infrastructure, those are pieces that are pretty critical. But the parking structure, that is an agreement between, that would be an agreement between the town and the developer that would say, we are guaranteeing this much development, and you all are providing this. And it's not, you're not going to build it first and then hope that somebody comes to essentially complete the vision. It's a coordinated agreement. But there's also two scenarios, as you mentioned, you know, the big developers that either A, a master plan developer, or sort of a piecemeal development partners, where they would come in one project at a time to execute on a master plan vision, or whether a master plan, planner would, master developer would come in and say, okay, I want to take care of all this right now, and we'll focus on, you know, phase at a time. So, you know, there's, you know, we've, DFI, we've been in conferences, the Brewers Guild Conference in Winston-Salem every year, there's a lot of breweries that are popping up in this area that have asked specifically about downtown Morrisville, what's happening with that, bottle shops. So, you know, there's a lot of homegrown talent, as you mentioned, in this area that would be excited for opportunities such as a town center to, and that would be on the role of the developer to, you know, fill these spaces with tenants that fit the vision of the town center.
Yeah, and I think also, the fact that it's closer to residential would be, you know, helpful as well. We do have that residential component built in. The challenge is, we don't have a lot of the existing infrastructure like some of the other downtowns have, that could pose an opportunity. I think the reason I ask that question is, we've been talking about this concept for a long time, and I'm just trying to figure out what is the sequence of, what direction do you need from us to make a decision of this is where we want to go? And then what are the decision points that, so that we can start seeing the finish line? Okay, you know, I mean, it may not, it may not happen overnight, you know, I just observing as I go to different downtowns, I see a commonality, you know, more of the commercial, and I'll stop, more of the commercial is homegrown small mom and pops. It's not, you know, just like retail.
Yeah, and we're not showing, I mean, the vision here is not for big box retail to be located in your downtown core. This is a boutique downtown with small retail opportunity spaces, and those are the developers that we would essentially, if, you know, moving forward, once, you know, there's big decisions that would need to happen before, we start talking about tenants that would fill these spaces, such as public investments that would need to take place, putting out RFPs for development services, those kind of things need to happen before we start filling the space with potential tenants. But, you know, the decision points you asked about, that would be getting counsel to make decisions on densities that they feel appropriate for this site, and public investments, once they see the potential revenues that they can generate, that's where, making those kind of decisions about what kind of public investments they'd feel comfortable with, and also how much density and scale would they like to see in a town center, to see developers do.
Satish, go ahead.
Mine's just your calculations, and I like this slide, I like this slide, and I'm going back to calculations. 180 apartments equates to 1.5 parking, and that's how you came up with 270 parking spots, correct? So, and I'm trying to refresh my memory from the library side, the request was for 75 parking spots?
Approximately.
Okay, so you add 270 to 75 is almost 345 parking spots.
Correct.
Yeah, so with 350 parking spots, out of which 345 taken away, and then you have 20K of retail, and then you have the green space. If we take a reverse logic of, say, town wants to buy our, like, lease space, they will not let us use the 270. The library will not let us use the 75. So we are left with only five parking spots that town would be given in the calculation.
Well, one point of clarification, in addition to the parking deck, there are...
We have 50.
Correct. It includes the surface parking and the street parking.
Yes, so, so like, and that, and I'm looking to this chart where you have, this has only parking, and then this is like a different...
Different phase.
Different phase, and other parking is near our thing.
Yeah, and you raise a really important point of, if you factor in individual components, and these can be, this is the agreements that would need to take place further on down the line with, once we hammer out some of these details of, you know, again, density scales, when we see can work out really the structure that we'd like to see, but there is shared parking components also that can be in agreement as well, that can be, you know, the residential component primarily takes parking from, you know, sort of a 9 to 8, 7 a.m., while retail, library usage, there's a lot of daytime uses that, we don't want to see parking decks, and the whole idea with parking decks is that you don't want to see spaces empty, you want to see it maximize its potential. So you don't want to over, overbuild parking to have one space for each use, you want to, there's potential for shared parking as well. But this factor is obviously the surface, the handicap accessible spaces that were included, surface parking, street parking as well for the library. So that is a good point, and we've, we don't want to take the deck any higher, and you've realized that there...
So that, so my theory is like, not for parking deck or not for parking deck is the sheer numbers of, I'm looking at how this whole thing is, will factor out, is then do we have to sublease it if we go from the, say, like, apartment guys, like, you know, so they'll say, okay, between this and this, like, you know, from 9 to 4, you can, the town can take it for a thing? Or, I'm just trying to, just thinking, because this is...
Certain details of the...
We're getting into the weeds because, yeah, exactly. But for me, for...
But that would be the strategy that would be put in place.
Because if we have some events on the weekend, you know, like, how, it'll just flood the whole area, you know, and how will that whole thing work out? So, and the cost of 275 is just the revenue that you're showing, like, you know, what's the operating cost of running on, you know, is it self-operating? Like, or is there a cost for running these things?
Yeah, no, there are operating costs, and that's, you know, that's something that once we can get to, and you hit, you hit a nail on the head, is the density and the scale that we would want to factor in for the residential component drives a lot of the potential revenue that we would see, and also the operating cost. There is a management system that would need to be in place for, if the town owned and operated the deck. So that's something that I think if we, are there any more thoughts here?
Well, so, on this particular one, just real, if I could jump in here. So if you look at the cash flows, if we take on this project, it's a significant loss for us every single year, you know, with the cash flows. I don't know, I think we should be looking at this in reverse. Why don't we look at, instead of leasing out 270, at least from the 80 that we need... Why don't we look at, instead of leasing out 270, lease from the 80 that we need? And I don't, I think, I don't know why we want to be in the parking deck business. I don't know why we want to be in the parking deck construction business. We're, we're notoriously underestimated what things cost, you know, throughout our history, you know, no fault of anyone, but that's just, you know, how things happen. I'd much rather see a scenario where we are, what, what, you know, we're going to get some revenue, because the price, you know, the piece of land right now is zero, it's creating zero revenue for us today. And if it can create, with the parking deck and the building, a $40 million piece of land, that's going to spit off 165,000 a year in property tax to us, I'd rather see a piece of that go towards leasing spaces where someone else is managing it, where someone else has had to build it. I don't think we should be in the business of running a parking deck with the associated costs of everything. But that's just my, my personal, I, I think there are different ways to get to this end state. I just want to be flexible. I want the council to kind of be open-minded as to, you know, there's, there's a different way than what's shown up here.
And what we see is, you know, yeah, it's, it's, this is again, the 270 spaces, that would be master leased, there's 350 spaces in this deck, you know, there's opportunity for hourly parking as well. It's a whole parking strategy that could go into this deck, that could generate more revenue than what it's showing right now. But yeah, I think we'll evaluate this scenario of leasing from the development. It's, it's about, you know, making a project that satisfies both needs for number of spaces that they'd like to see in the town center. And I think right now, we'd like to, you know, focus on some of the big picture items of, you know, the scale and of, of the project before we get into, this discussion tonight is more about the site design concept, before we start talking about the, you know, financial strategy.
You're being nice to me, telling me to stay out of the weeds.
No, 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 that, those are, those are key decision points that we will get to as we, as we, once we can finalize a, a program piece that you all are comfortable with the council, we can then hammer out the details. There's a scenario that, of just having residential parking only, and having, you know, three floors of it, that there's no parking then left over for the public uses, that we could evaluate as well for this project. So again, this is, is aimed to accommodate the public need for parking in the town center core, and this is a scenario that a lot of communities have, have gone to as a way to catalyze their downtown through public investments. And oftentimes, parking is seen as, as an infrastructural piece that after year 23 or 24, the deck is now generating a lot of revenue because you've paid off the deck. So that's something that has to be factored in as well for the, you know, if you own the deck versus having to lease it year in, year in, year in.
Well, it also needs to be rebuilt one day, and-
Yeah, exactly, and that goes into the material choices.
It's not free after it's paid off the debt. So I'll quit talking, and turn it down to Vicky and Liz for their comments.
Thank you. I also support looking at a scenario where we own the deck and where we are leasing the deck. I think that's a good balance of looking at our options. I, I see a deck that would have mixed use of public and private uses. I'm not interested in residential only, or, you know, that kind of thing. But I wanted to also see if we consider, like, bus stop locations, because we're going to have the library, and we want people to walk to it, we want people not necessarily always to drive to it, so could we also consider bus stop locations? That way it might relieve some pressure of this parking dilemma. I'm concerned that we don't even have enough parking designed as it is. We have a nice mixed-use development, Park West Village, where they have 1.5 or so parking spaces for some of their apartments, and that is a very crowded area around. They also have a parking deck, so it, I kind of look at that as, if I was to do it differently, what would I do, kind of thing? And parking is very sensitive. People want to have two cars per unit, no matter what, if it's one bedroom, two bedrooms, or three bedrooms. The other, besides public transportation, I think we're missing an opportunity to have a diverse set of housing options. You mentioned the, the feeling of Mooresville's to have larger apartments or larger units, and I would say that, could we consider having some smaller units for workforce housing, so our police can actually live close to the police station, and our firefighters live closer to the fire station? Having some smaller units would allow for a more diverse community, and that would add to the blend for that downtown area. I would be interested in seeing some options there. And I just want to confirm that the farmer's market is outside of this location, and it's like part of the green area, so that that can be another asset to the town, but it's outside the project itself.
Yes.
Very good. That's all. We want to leave before midnight.
We're going to do multiple inputs here, I think, right? Because we have to go back to the, the, the site itself and the option one and two, and-
Yeah.
Okay, well, so as long as we're talking about the parking deck right now, I'll throw my two cents in on that. I want to echo what Vicky said. I'm still not decided that I want to manage a parking deck, and I haven't decided if I don't want to be in the management of a parking deck. So I'd still like to explore this as we're moving forward, but I will tell you, the cash flow needs to look a whole lot better. So, and I was kind of disappointed in that, in that chart. So, but I realize that when we go back to the project timeline, there's, you know, a time where we're going to solicit for a private developer, and then there's the negotiation of agreements. So that would be important to me during that time, how this is negotiated and looks a little better in our favor, so.
And maybe I can just mention that the cash flow of the debt service includes a 2.5 million for road infrastructure, stormwater, so we can maybe break that out into different components as well.
That would be fine, because we've already committed to that, so that would be fine. I'm still not sure that that's going to get us in our favor, but maybe it will. So, yeah, that, that would be helpful, I think. And I'm, if we're going to, I don't know if we all want to talk some more, or if we're going right to the site options, but.
We'll just keep going around until we're done.
Till we've, till we're talked out?
TJ, Michael, and Satish, any other initial thoughts? We'll keep going around.
I'm, I'm good looking at both ways to do the parking. I like these concepts. I just want to keep us moving forward and know that things are going to cost what they're going to cost, and if we want a downtown, we're going to need to make an investment and show commitment, so the developers know that we're in this for the entire project, not just the demonstration.
Well, I think, at least my colleagues know where I stand on this somewhat, but I'll reiterate it.
Parking deck.
Well, I don't, I've never been in the business of running a parking deck, but I'll, I'll start to help everybody. My kind, I mean, I followed this project before, before I got elected on the board six years ago, and I always felt that public-private partnerships didn't necessarily work, I mean, when we can. So I'm of the side that says, you know, let's set the table with infrastructure, and try and do that, then have development come in and do things. So just, you know, a mile down the road, we have a apartment complex with maybe 400 apartments in it, they have a parking deck wrapped around parking deck, they did it all on their own dollar. I want to set the table downtown where we could do that. So I've always been in favor of bringing the library downtown, and partnering with the library, just the library, doubling their spaces to do a parking deck that meets our needs, so we can have east meets west, we have 75 spaces for that, we have, like the meeting tonight, you probably all found out it was a little tough parking, that parking deck would be available to you guys. And I want to do the roundabout, I want to do stormwater, I think those things are going to be done. I want to keep the library on track. So at some point, I think, as a council, but I'm, to be honest with you, I don't think I'm going to change my mind about a parking deck. You can, I'm, I'm in the minority, but we're going to come to a decision point, probably within six months, where we're going to have to decide, because I don't want to lose the opportunity to partner with them on a parking deck, just doubling their space, using that amount of money, and where we're going to put that. So that's where I am on this. So I'm just trying to tell you guys that, you know, financially, I, I don't want to run a parking, a deck, that's another added cost, but at the same time, I do think we need to double their amount of parking spaces. I would be willing to, as compromised to say, wherever they're building their surface space, that in the design, if we can afford it, if we're not going to build a parking deck, then we could make it so that at some point, we could add that second story. And I'll throw it out there, that at some point, with private development, maybe if they want to come in early enough, because again, I don't want to stop the timeline on the library, that if they said, gee, we could do a third and fourth floor, we'd be happy to do that, and, you know, maybe there's some room for that wiggle room, but I don't know.
Like a phased parking deck?
Yes. That, you know, somewhere down the line, it could work, but initially, I'm, I'm always against us running it, they would be them running it, and maybe, you know, they're adding on to our parking deck, so they're saving a little money, but-
And that would, it would, there would be upfront costs, it would be more expensive upfront to make a parking deck that can be added on to later. And so that's something that would have to-
No, I understand, but I think, again, we're going to come to this decision point within some, and staff, you can tell me, it's six months, we're going to, I don't want to delay their, the library coming in, and they're going to need to know where their parking is going to be. And I'm just saying, at that point, that's going to help me, and should, hopefully the council decide, are we going to move, how are we moving forward?
If I may interject quickly, one of the things that both these site options do is, they allow that flexibility for when that parking comes online and how it comes online, whether it starts at surface, whether it's structured parking day one, whether there's temporary surface, all that flexibility is built into these schemes that, that law, like those courts, and where the location of that parking deck is being adjacent to the library, and not allowing the construction to ever kind of cut that off. So there's all that flexibility currently in those schemes to do any of those scenarios.
But again, my point is, the library, I want, in their design plans, if they're going to, the surface, I don't think our UDO allows for a temporary parking lot, but at the same point, I'm just saying, I don't want to lose the opportunity, the decision point to say, let's just bite the bullet and put in the hundred, the extra 80 spaces we, we need, know we need today, and not wait on a developer. Developer might come down the road, and that's fine. So that's my concept. Thank you.
I'm going to say, ever since like, this whole discussion started, I, ever since this discussion started about the town center and this whole plan, the demonstration project, and we have reiterated that library is the jewel, and we get apartment complexes, and we have, over the last one year, we approved several of them. Everyone comes with a plan, with parking and everything, like, you know, the whole thing. And we are talking only 180 apartments here, not a whole lot. Is that, I'm, I'm trying to think through it as the whole discussion is going, is this a commitment that you guys are giving to the people, or like, when you're selling, they're saying that it will be, like, the town would be doing this as a public investment? Because in Mooresville, or in Cary, you're saying that when apartment complexes come for permits here, they are successful. Like, 180, 300, 400 apartments, our occupancy rates are pretty high. So why is this, like, you know, why are we, like, parking deck or no deck, or this one? They are pretty successful. So I'm sure when you take this proposal to them, they will be pretty happy, because it's in the epicenter of Mooresville with the library, and all around it couldn't get a better place in the heart of, of this one, so.
That's a good point also, and this is establishing the heart. Right now, it's, it's, it's not the heart of, of more, I mean, it's essentially the government center.
Yeah, but the library is, it's, it's, is there.
Yeah, and-
We are there, the street, the town center is, I mean, so the town hall drive is there, it's pretty much, library is not going, going away. You know, we are here, so that's what it is. So that, that's the thing I'm saying, is why are they, like, you know, 180 apartments just around it? And like, just Grace, Grace Park, we're just saying, we're talking about a Grace Park coming around the library. I'm just envisioning that, like that, in your design, when I'm going through this.
Yeah, and, and this is, this concept is, is matching a lot of the goals of what the town would like to see, with that, you know, making sure that you all are in control of the design process. And so, you know, we don't want to give up control over what you'd like your town center core to look like.
Absolutely.
And so that's, you know, we don't want a sea of surface parking, that then makes it an unwalkable environment, you know, so I, I, I think-
We're all in agreement, pretty much, I think, from all, I, I don't want to talk for everyone in the council, but everyone, everyone is in agreement for the demonstration project, except when it comes to this parking deck. That's where this whole thing is coming. But when apartment complex, they won't, they understand the parking deck, or parking is part of, integral part of their, the process. So that's where, like, especially with 350, 270 are required for them, for their own residents. That's all.
Can I ask, just, I know, I think we want to get into the design a little bit, if that's okay? So just a general comment on the design, and then a question about the rest of Phase One towards Church Street. The design, I'm wondering, do we really need to get into, you know, there's going to be commercial here, three stories here, that, I mean, are we really, I don't know that the benefit of us talking for the next hour about all the variations that you gave, gave us, but ultimately, it's up to a private developer what, what appeals to them. I would think we'd want to give all these options to say, here, here are the options, unless there's something, one of these, that we just absolutely can't stand to live with. But I didn't see anything that you presented that looked terrible or awful, or, you know, would, would one make me not do? But I also don't want to limit what we're presenting to the developing community, so my opinion would be, I think you'd want to leave it open to these options, and see, see what the development community wants to do.
Yeah.
And I'm open, if there's, if I've missed that totally, if there's something where people just, you know, absolutely not, I'll never do design number one, then let's hear it, but I didn't, I mean-
There's a couple of big moves, and I, I agree, that there needs to be flexibility for the design for the developer, but there's moves that you all have to say, and what you want to see happen right now. If there's a retail corridor, you want to establish an amount of retail that you would like to see as part of the project, if you want to screen, you know, Jeremiah, there's, there's certain things in the agreement of the RFP that we can state that would then, we obviously, there's a sort of a density, a scale, that we can show to the developer that says the town is, wants to see this, rather than leaving it all up to a developer. There's the big moves, for instance, how, how do we approach Jeremiah Street? How do we want to create this inner courtyard? If there was a parking deck, do we, how, we want to screen it in this manner? There's the big moves, the density and the scale particularly, that if you all are in agreement that you like the density and scale, that helps, that, that first off, we're able to now take these concepts here, refine these to get much better square footage counts of individual units, so we can talk about the breakdown of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, things of that nature. And then we can also start to put together the financial packages, say, what, here's what a lease arrangement could look like for parking, you know? We want to know the big moves, though, of what the town wants to see, and what the town would be willing to accept with this project. And if, if you don't see much difference-
Well, I mean, I, I see all the differences, and I, there are nuances on each one of those designs, but, you know, we're not the ones putting up the 30 million, there's someone else doing that, and so I think-
Yeah.
We have to be cognizant of giving them flexibility, and let's face it, if they pick something that we just don't like, we can always, I mean-
I think we need to influence the decision on some of these components early. And I'd like to maybe have a little bit more discussion on, not every one of these elements I have an opinion on, but there are a few of these that I, I might.
Okay, so why don't we, we can go down the road and talk about your opinions of the design. The other, the second question I had for you, on the rest of Phase One, how much multifamily housing was in that component? I know there's a, on the far corner, where we have a life estate right now-
There was a-
For the community center, but the other space, you know, which is probably half of that rest of Phase One, is that also being looked at as multifamily?
There would be a multifamily component of- There would be a multifamily component of that, and that's, there's flexibility to that. I know there was talks about diversity of housing stock that you'd like to see in the town center. Right now, we modeled in the full town center build-out scenario, we're talking about projected costs associated with the full build-out over a 10-year phase. That was multifamily focused. When we get into individual projects, we can talk about condos versus condos, townhomes, and multifamily. There's, you know, we can, each project is, can be individual. There's flexibility in each of the projects. This project right here, the demonstration, is multifamily.
Do you guys want to take a five or 10-minute break, then we can do a, talk about design? Five minutes? Let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back at, I'll say, 9:20, and then we'll get into comments about the design then. I'm going to ask for a quick recap of some of the design features, and I, I, we'll go down the line then and ask council for, try to keep a high-level comments, like it, hate it, you know, just to move on. But if you could go ahead and give us a recap of kind of the, the big design differences in what we saw, and then we'll start with Michael and work our way down.
Okay. So very quickly, both options, we mentioned we'd studied things in lots of different configurations. We've brought these to you feeling the best comfort about it. In terms of how the site is organized, there's essentially four quadrants to the site. There is a quadrant with the library. There is a quadrant that's primarily what I'm labeling "commercial", that gets the bulk of the retail and commercial space. There's this quadrant on the upper left that has amenity space for the residents. It's fairly central to everybody. And then there's a quadrant with parking that is close to the library and gets it off of the main street areas that people can go through the courtyards. That's common to both schemes. That's something we've vetted internally. So the first question would be, you know, is there anything that people are not comfortable or would want to see differently about that kind of organization? Beyond that, the differences between Option One and Option Two. The only two differences really are that how we handle the parking deck in terms of its exposure and how, and potentially how we screen it as a consequence. Option One shows it with the parking deck exposed, so to speak. We can do an architectural screen towards the courtyard, and the housing goes around the outside of the site so that there's always residential facing the street. In addition to that, the commercial space is all tied together in one quadrant. It's all together contiguous piece. Option Two, the only difference is that the parking deck, regardless of orientation exactly, it has exposed sites that are towards Jeremiah and Town Hall, with the idea that those are more well-buffered potentially in terms of vegetated screening and maybe an architectural screen. And the other difference is that the commercial is split up between a little less commercial in that upper right quadrant. We have some commercial space on the, against the parking deck, and residences above to be that screened towards the courtyard and engage the courtyard more. So it's essentially the commercial space that's split versus contiguous, and whether the parking deck faces a courtyard or faces the street. And that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, we've gone through, you know, putting the library on that quadrant over here in the middle, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
We've gone through a lot of those tests where it physically doesn't work very well and all of that. So this is where we essentially recommend these schemes to you. And we're looking for just some input on if you think that anything is wildly wrong or if there's a strong preference for one or the other.
Okay. Michael, why don't you?
Okay. Right, and this is to help you with your RFP or whatever?
Well, it's also to help in terms of the density of the site that everybody's comfortable with, you know, four-level residential wrapping three sides of this thing. You know, the amount of housing that we have, the density of it up against the street.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
The design concept here, so how this typically goes is, this is the site analysis portion where we vet concepts with you all and make sure you're comfortable with the density, scale, and program pieces that we're presenting as part of this project. This comes into a financial model where we start to put together, all right, what are the returns that we could likely see with this kind of project? What are the private investments that, that we see, you know, where are the returns? If we talk about density and scale, I think that's one of the biggest things. That all, that really influences the financial model the most. You know, whether residential's on the back or front, that's not going to influence. But we're talking two stories versus four stories of development, amount of retail that you would like to see, that's going to influence the financial model. So what you all sort of recommend tonight and prefer, that will go directly into the financial model of what we present to you all as, as ultimately a strategy for this project.
Okay, so trying to keep the process moving forward, my concept is I'm happy with where you're situated, everything. I'm with the mayor in the standpoint that says, leave it up to the developer. I don't know if, so I don't know if I need to parse it. I'd be happy as far as, because again, I'm maybe a minority, but if private wants to come in and do their thing, I'd be giving, I'd give them more density if they require less of us to do, let's say, a parking deck. I'm of the opinion, a two-story parking deck would be fine, just partnering with the library on that, and that's fine. So screening, I don't care if it, you know, I think you could do it with trees. And I don't, you know, and shading the, I don't think it would affect residential on the one side or not, really, if it was that small. So does that help? Or you have a, you can ask me a question if you need more concept.
Well, if I play devil's advocate, we went through, you know, a bit of the process where, for example, we had five stories of housing, and, you know, a five, we have a six-level deck or something like that. Does that make people uncomfortable in an urban center in Morrisville versus, you know, what you have in downtown Raleigh or something like that, where they can go that high easily?
Well, just again, half mile down the road, they have that. They just did it privately and they wrapped it. So that's what I would tell the, the private enterprise, if you want that bigger deck, just wrap it.
You're talking about the one on Weston and...
Yeah.
4?
Yeah. It's roughly half a mile from this side, three-quarters of a mile, but okay.
That's helpful.
Okay. Just that would help?
Yes, just getting that kind of input helps, just to make sure they were on the right track.
Great.
TJ, next.
Yeah, I guess that's the important question, because these two concepts that you're showing us, they don't really have different scale or density. They're the same thing, but you're asking us to approve it. So essentially, you're not really giving us a choice on this one, if that's an important thing. You just gave us a choice saying five and six, rather than just four. So I would be comfortable in that, as long as Courtney would weigh in and say, that's really not going to be a problem for the townhomes on Jeremiah, that it's going to be just too big for them. Because I think that's your concern, is that the stepping is going to be too abrupt. That would be my only concern. I see this as, it's not just going to serve the town center, it's going to serve all the residents nearby. So that's why it's important to do whatever we need to do to get developers in there. They're going to have retail components, because that's what's going to really drive and make this a vibrant place. So if we start thinking sort of bigger, that there's, we already have all these rooftops nearby, this is really supporting them so that they can walk to this. So if you're looking for density and scale, whatever needs to make it vibrant is, would be my hope. And I don't necessarily think it matters which way it's facing, the parking garage, but I really, frankly, I don't know what architectural screening means. So if you could just give me one minute on that?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it.
There are various ways of doing it. We work at American Tobacco where they put brick on the building to, it looks like your typical sort of long spandrel of shielding the cars, you know, headlights and things like that. But it's, it's done in a more, you know, architectural way with, with a more finished material than, say, precast concrete or something like that. You can also do something that completely clouds it, almost makes it look like a building, but instead of windows, you just have holes in the parking deck. You could do various, you know, anything between making it try to look like a building to something that's fairly minimal, just covers, a spandrel, something more decorative. Or you can screen it, like you said, in terms of, you know, if it's slow enough, you could just use trees, you know, whether it's something that's fairly dense like that. Architectural screening, I was talking about an actual building element.
Okay.
Versus like a vegetative screen.
Okay.
A lot of the areas we work in, you know, have real strict requirements on amount of openings, how big they are.
Okay.
And what you can see, what you can't see, how much horizontal you can see, if you can see the ramps. You know, and especially, you know, when we get into neighborhood settings and, and different cities, we're working on one with City of Durham right now, and everything is very strict about everything that we do and getting community input and all of that. So if you think that's going to be an issue, you know, it might be something where you don't necessarily, you want to think about putting a little bit of extra cost per space and to accommodate some of those architectural features that you might want to add.
So in our case, would the screening be more important towards Jeremiah for our UDO, or how would that work?
Yes.
Okay.
That would, and it's, it's natural screening, such as trees, it would be less expensive than hardscape.
Okay.
Well, I think we're also talking about the design that you would see from Jeremiah Street. Is it, you know, is it going to be precast concrete? Is it, are we going to say, is that brick?
Could be a lovely color.
I don't think we necessarily have to get into that little detail yet, because there's a lot of options there. But it's more about, you know, the level of, you know, you know...
But there's a lot more to it than just...
Are people comfortable seeing parking versus apartments, you know, with windows?
I'm just saying, the way that they showed it was with trees on this diagram.
Yes.
I think I'm okay with the parking facing either way.
I have, one concern I have is, obviously, like you played a devil's advocate, the concept here is construing library as a jewel. And I liked, when we were told, the library needs to have a breathing space. If we are basically putting four, five-storied and above and just basically making a concrete jungle around it and overlooking it. So I don't know how that feels. You guys are better planners, but... That's one thing. I'm just, from the look and feel of it, we know library is just a little more than a single-story. And the developer needs high density. That's given. But at the same time, what is a feel that doesn't go away the ambience of the entire downtown look? At, because, yes, Councilmember Schlink likes parking deck, so do I, but at the same time, not like five, six-story, that it's too high or some, that it's completely, it's overshadowing the jewel of where the library is sitting. So those things are also important to weigh in and looking into the overall concept plan. Because if you're doing a six-story or seven, like, like, I don't know what the UDO allows. I think six-story, I don't, Courtney is there, but if we allow, say that, go with the, whatever the person, you know, the developer wants to invest. And he comes back and says, yes, I'll do parking decks, I'll do six-storied all around it. Do we, what's our story there, you know? So, and here, here we are, where we allow, you know, we, we have control. So as a council, we, we have to have some kind of a thing that we have to keep the gist of where the library is and have a space and the breathing space around it and what it should look like. So that's just the...
So if you, can you recap two sentences that you just said?
My, my sentence is, the library should have, be the centerpiece of it without being a concrete jungle around it, with high spaces.
If, we feel in the recommended designs that we've shown that, that we've captured the appropriate scale. We know it can get overwhelming.
Okay.
At, you know, at, at higher levels, you know, especially when you get closer to the building, you know, if you don't get that, that breathing room. We feel comfortable that we can accomplish, you know, a successful design for the library and for, you know, everything around it in that sense, in either scheme. And just what the backdrop is that library can vary, but the scale that we feel is comfortable right now. I want to, but if I may, there are two things to think about in terms of the scale. One is the library, like you said, having both space, you know, away from the building and then, you know, in terms of height compared to it, because it's a tall one-story building. And then we can do things with roofs to kind of help with that, too. The other is, of course, the housing across on Jeremiah Street. There's not the same concern, you know, across Town Hall, just because there's an enormous buffer there. And whether, you know, we feel like a three-to-four-story building is, is not too big of a step. But once we go above that, you start to need, you know, more steps, that gets to be more complex construction, things like that. This all encapsulates essentially our recommendation from that. So if everybody's comfortable with that, we certainly feel comfortable with it as well. We don't mean to put something in front of you that we wouldn't be comfortable with.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the numbers, the, the square footage of commercial, the residential units, I'm fine with all that. The location of the library, that site is, I'm fine with that, too. And I do like what Markhead said about, you know, allowing a little bit of flexibility with the developers. But, or end, I, I really was hoping we would wrap the parking deck even more. And I, I guess that can't happen on this site, otherwise you would have offered that. So the screening then of that parking deck, I think, is pretty critical from both sides, and especially from the courtyard side, because there's so much green space there. So that would be important. And then the one thing I really did like in Option Two more than Option One was the fact that you, it looks like the, the height of the residential piece is even with the parking deck. And for some reason, well, I know why you, you didn't do that in Option One, so...
Option One, we stepped down the residential and the, the parking deck seems to say in height, that was too addressed Jeremiah a little bit. We could certainly, I mean, we could probably get to 200 units if we did that. I just didn't know if people would feel comfortable with having four levels. Now, the residential levels are not like office building levels, so they're not quite as tall. But if people feel comfortable with that, and that's maybe something we can show in a further study of what that section through the street to the housing looks like.
But that would be helpful, actually. And so, and the screening then on Jeremiah, whichever way the parking or the residential faces, whether it's on Jeremiah or if it's in inside, again, the, the screening on Jeremiah and if, if you are, is important. And if you are, if I, I don't know if this is all to scale or not, but it looks like in Option Two, there's the ability to do a whole lot of screening on Jeremiah. So that kind of leads me to lean a little bit more towards Option Two, but both are.
Everything's to scale.
It is to scale.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I'm leaning more towards Option Two. If, if I had to pick one. But again, I think that flexibility out there for the development community is, is important, too.
I also am looking at Option Two as the preferred option. I really like the library location. I think that really does have appeal being alongside Town Hall Drive. But when I was considering both options, I was thinking, if I'm sitting in the library and I'm looking out, do I want to see a parking structure, or do I want to see more residential kind of environments? Because a library is a thoughtful place. And Option Two provides the retail as well as residential viewing from the, the walls. And I think that is a compelling reason to consider putting the parking deck outside of this space and then screening it appropriately. The other thing I was reminded at break is, if we're considering different modes of access to the library besides walking, we should consider bikes as well. And if, you know, we could add more bike parking, you know, secure parking so that people can ride their bikes from the greenways or so forth, that would be a, a way to reduce our stress in the parking structure. And also just to reaffirm my position that it'd be nice to see a diverse product for the residential units, not just all the same high-end luxury, but we want to have a mixture of different products so that different economic groups can enjoy that space. Thank you.
I'm fine with both options. I mean, I, I really would leave it to the developer to sort of, I'm fine with, you know, to make the investment of maybe, no, I'm still sort of up in the air on the parking deck in terms of how we would make that happen, but I guess I would be in favor of a, you know, a larger one that would attract even more people coming in. I want to spend more of my time, you know, I, I agree, I like Councilmember Schlink's analogy of setting the table. I mean, I think that's really our job, is we have to identify what are the investments we want to make in the basic infrastructure to make this a reality and a sellable concept to a partner who is then going to leverage the demographic of our town. We just got rated number one state to live in North Carolina by NICH. to live in North Carolina by Niche, the, the brand, Live Connected, Live Well. And how do we as a council develop a vision that we can sell? And I think that each and every one of us can be an integral part of that process. So I, quite frankly, I feel like I'm the wrong person to have a discussion with on how high I want the parking deck or where the design is. But I just want to, you know, I love the idea of setting the table, making those necessary investments that we all can agree on and then going through the process and funding. But I think we've, we didn't talk a lot about that, but I think there's a lot of really good momentum going on in Morrisville now. And I think we have a really good opportunity to leverage that momentum and sell a really good vision that would make us unique, right? And, and I think it'd make it a lot easier having these discussions if we already had a partner at the table. I mean, we, we don't. So, but that could change. So that's all I have on that. Thank you.
I think I stated earlier, I'm, I'm okay with either option. The question I have for you all on option two, is there an opportunity in option two, and actually I have a second, that you can exit from the garage to Jeremiah Street?
Oh, yes, definitely.
When I picture, you know, it's 350 cars buzzing by the library through the, sort of the courtyard to get to the parking deck, it gives me a little pause. I would love to.
I had to apologize. I messed up my graphics. I had my sketches and I didn't translate to the computer model. But there should be a second exit onto Jeremiah from the parking deck on that north end, right mid block of Jeremiah.
That's scary if I'm thinking like an engineer.
You're exactly right. I mean, when'd you get to, when'd you get in that sort of 400, yeah, through space on there?
Is that, and is that just option two would allow that?
Both options allow that.
Okay, then fine. So.
Yeah, you would span over with housing on option one towards Jeremiah. On the other one, you, you come underneath, you know, on, on the far side of the office, commercial space.
And I'd say I'm really open to either one of those, either one of those options at this point. All right. Did we get anywhere tonight? Did you feel like we?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds.
This is the direction. Library siding works, the density scale, you all are comfortable with the scale. Now what we do, the next steps, we, that's not like this much refinement of the overall concept plan. Little, start to put test fits of unit counts to each of these floors so that we can refine our financial model, come back at you with a, a strategy and more refined cost estimates of, of what the design is showing us. And then this lease versus own scenario for the parking, that's what, now that we have all the sizing and the concept down, we can come back with you about the lease versus own strategy for parking.
All right. Well, I want to thank you all for coming to Morrisville on a Tuesday night. And what is the next update you think? When will we see you next?
I think it'll be next week when we hear from the aquatic center update as well. Y'all gonna have that information ready by then?
Yeah.
We've engaged it a week.
Sign up and his plan's ready for him.
Okay.
We'll just pull one out of the drawer.
Sure, sure. Okay. Okay. Thank you guys very much. Martha, did you want to?
No, I think our timeline on our end with budget, et cetera, will drive some of our timeline with bringing back others, but we're moving it. So just, just a reminder, you know, we're, we're working on that timeline, maximizing our opportunities with Wake County. We're looking at having real decisions in September, October, November, December. That's when we're talking about issuing an RFP. So we're moving quickly. It doesn't sound quick, but it's, it's quick. So just keep that in mind. If we want to continue to make sure we're maximizing all of our opportunities with the library, that just becomes more and more and more important.
All right. Council's got to go into closed session here, so I'll give you all a chance to gather up your stuff. Steve, if you could go ahead and take us there.
Pursuant to North Carolina statute 143 dot 318, A3, a move that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing a matter of attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll wait for the chamber to clear a little bit and then we'll get started here in a couple minutes.